Out of the agenda. Next time. We will call the meeting to order. This is the April twenty second, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Portsmouth School Board. Welcome, everyone. May we have the call to or I mean, the roll call, Patty?
Sure. Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Present.
Tish Campbell. Nancy Clayberg.
Here.
Pip Clues.
Yeah.
Brian French.
Here.
Lee Hudson.
Here.
Byron Mado.
Here.
Carrie Nolte.
Here.
Lisa Rappaport.
Here.
Eric Moore.
Here.
Nathan Delaney.
Okay, can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Announcements and recognitions. I would like to announce that our school board member Liz Barrett is resigned from our board. And I want to take an opportunity to thank her for her incredible dedication and compassion to our board. She had a wonderful commitment to the kids in Portsmouth, the students, our staff, our families, our community. So we want to thank her for all the work she's done for the past three years on our board. We want to wish her the best. Hopefully, we'll all bump into her at some time or another. And then I want to welcome our new school board member, Genevieve Beckstead Musk. Genevieve is a Portsmouth sort of born and bred person. She came here when she was in the fifth grade. Went to Dundee Arrow, Melville School, Valley School. So welcome, Genevieve.
Thank you.
We wish her the best on on our board. Okay, does anybody else have an announcement or recognition?
I just got to say, this is more around sequencing of stuff tonight, just that we have Nathan Delaney, who Nathan Delaney and a team of people from the high school were going to talk about student voice, the experience of of the exchange we had with Hanover High School. I'm excited about to hear that. And then Nathan's been sick the last couple of days and is not here. The the adult, well, the staff, not the adults, because sometimes Nathan's like.
Our adult and all of them.
I'm not like, thank you. And so so they the staff was ready to go, but felt like this is really, you can't do it without Nathan. So so that's not one that we're going to be in a position to do tonight. And the other ones are just going to mention that Jen Taberski is here to talk about futures. And then later, there's like, we had a agenda item around the consideration approval of some bylaw changes for futures, and I would just recommend that you suspend the rules to move that up so that you can do that as a as a combination. Yep.
Okay, we will do that. Anyone else? Yes, Lisa.
I should probably let Eric do this, but I want to put in a plug for our Fine Arts Night at three S on May nine. It's an amazing student show of art and music and some writing and other things. And it's been a really great experience the last few years. And that's coming up on May ninth at three S. You should all go.
What what time does that mean?
On five to eight P. M.
Okay, at three S. Okay, great. Anyone else? Thank you, Lisa. Okay, we will move on to the consent agenda. We have two sets of meetings to approve April eighth, twenty twenty five, non-public meeting and April eighth, twenty twenty five, our regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve those sets?
Both. Same. So moved.
Second. Is there? Thank you, Carrie and Brian. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, he's not here. I mean, he's on the phone.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Here. Oh, my, I'm sorry.
Not the like having the first vote, if you get to go first, you don't get a chance to hear what other people are gonna say.
If it's on the vote, I will abstain.
Abstain, thank you. Tish Campbell absent. Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Passes. And Patty, just to give Genevieve a little bit of a break, can you stop the boat? You know.
Tonight will.
I'll come backwards tonight. I'll come backwards tonight.
It was good. No, no warning. You're on. Go.
Try to stagger it, you know, one person goes first and the next. Be that better. Be great. Thank you, Patty. Okay, public comment. You don't have anyone here for public comment. How about on Zoom? Do we have anyone on Zoom for public comment?
All hands.
Okay, all right, close the public comment session.
Make a motion.
To what? Close it?
Well, to what do I want to do? I want to suspend the rules. That's what I want to do and move up consideration and approval of futures bylaws.
Second.
Any discussion?
All in favor? Just do not do it yet. I'll do the presentation first, which is next on the agenda, and then we'll get up after that.
He's not to come.
We can choose.
Okay.
I would say too, just for again, as we're as we're bringing on a new member to anytime, so our our rule our rules set out the order of the agenda. And then in order to change any of our rules, which are it's not just the order of the agenda, it's like, when can people talk and what's okay, you know, all those things. It requires a two thirds vote. Every time we want to move things around, the two thirds of the board has to agree to do it. So.
Okay.
Okay, Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte.
Yes.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Yes.
Okay, passes. Okay. Thank you. So now we will have Jennifer Tyberski come up and talk to us about futures. Thank you, Jennifer.
Hey, everyone.
Oh. Hey.
I've prepared a report, so I'm just going to read it off to you, and then I will answer questions like a regular person, if you have them. Good evening. Thank you so much for having me here tonight to speak about the Futures Program and the wonderful students involved. My name is Jenny Tyberski. I've been the coordinator for Futures since fall of two thousand twenty one. For those who might be unfamiliar with Futures, the program was started in nineteen eighty six by Joe Sawtell, a local businessman and philanthropist who recognized an area of opportunity in the Portsmouth community, bridging the gap between high school and college for students who may have lacked the necessary support and resources. The story goes that one summer, Joe had a high school student working for him. The student was bright, and Joe asked what his plans were after high school and if he was considering college. The student's mother told Joe not to put such ideas in her son's head because they could never afford college. This did not sit well with Joe, who rallied the community and created the Futures Fund alongside his wife Jean. This fund continues to thrive today at the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation, and through this fund, Futures has been able to provide mentoring and financial support for nearly forty years. I'm going to get a little bit into the numbers of where we're at historically with all of our alumni data. I want to preface this by saying that the program's first graduating class was nineteen ninety three. So you don't have as much accurate data from those early years, but we've started to keep a pretty good record. So between the programs start in nineteen eighty six and two thousand twenty five, two hundred and forty four students have participated in the Futures Program and received high school mentoring. Of those eligible to have started college and who received mentoring through high school, two hundred and sixteen of them have gone on to begin a degree program, and nineteen of those students are still currently enrolled in some form of college degree program. Of those who began college and could graduate, one hundred and thirty three students graduated successfully from at least an associate's program between nineteen ninety three and two thousand twenty five, making the graduation rate of future students sixty eight percent. The national average graduation rate for first generation college students is twenty four percent, which means future students are graduating at rates nearly three times the national average for first generation students. We currently have students enrolled at UNH, SNHU, RIT, Great Bay Community College, Keene State College, Emmanuel College, Plymouth, George Mason, UVM, and Lakes Region Community College. Our high school students are thriving as well, learning a new curriculum each month that will prepare them for the college application process, as well as how to be successful once they complete high school. We currently have three freshmen, eleven sophomores, nine juniors, and four seniors participating in the program, and we're actively working on connecting with more freshmen to apply for next year. The eighth grade application process is underway, and those applicant applications are due on Friday. Futures provides college mentoring and financial support, and to date, Futures has provided over two point three million dollars to students on their journey through college. That support has come in the form of scholarship awards, gift cards to purchase books and materials, and computer stipends. Futures participates twice annually in fundraisers, Giving Tuesday, and New Hampshire Gives. These fundraisers provide Futures the opportunity to gain awareness for our program, as well as allow us to continue to provide support beyond scholarship for students. Alongside this report, I have submitted a revised copy of the Futures bylaws. The change that was made was to the makeup of the advisory board itself. Futures has always been fortunate to have community members who are willing to be involved and to serve on our advisory board, and we wanted to continue that community involvement by ensuring our board was represented by a variety of people. We've adjusted our board membership to requiring eight members, and those members will be made up of the PHS principal, an alumnus of the program, a person with a historical connection to the program, a school board representative, a member of the SAU or SAU fifty, SU fifty or fifty two community, the superintendent and or the assistant superintendent. And we'll also strive to recruit members with the following experience and background whenever possible. Portsmouth High School graduate, local business owner, individual with financial background or experience, and individuals with a history with the Futures Program. And I just want to say that I love my job. I love the Futures Program, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have, but that is the official report.
Any questions for Jenny? I have a question. How much money do we actually give each student that's going to college?
That's a great question. So it varies. We have essentially in our handbook, we guarantee students anywhere from fifteen hundred to five thousand dollars per year for up to four years. With that being said, we have I have sort of a formula I use when I receive their financial aid awards. So our goal is to always try to match up to the cost of UNH. So our goal would be for any student to try to be able to attend UNH, Keene, or Plymouth for as close to free as possible. And that includes them applying for local scholarships, completing the FAFSA, and being eligible for Pell Grant, direct loans, et cetera. And then Futures kind of comes in and tries to make up whatever that difference looks like. Most of our students qualify for the Granite Guarantee in New Hampshire, which is for any student that qualifies for the Pell Grant, they're eligible to receive four years of free tuition from any of the three state universities or colleges. So almost all of our students qualify for that because they're Pell eligible. So we do have, especially in recent years, a lot of students that are opting to make that choice to stay local in New Hampshire, attend one of the three state schools or community colleges to just make it so that they are able to graduate from college debt free. So the answer to your question is, it depends. We are given an amount each year from the New Hampshire Charitable Foundation. We have one fund specifically for scholarship awards for college students, and that fund typically we receive our four percent disbursement is anywhere between fifty five and sixty five thousand dollars a year. And typically, we are staying within that range when we're awarding students.
But I was going to say that one of the things I think I know when we talk to people in the community, and I think when I first was getting to know Futures, it you think, oh, fifteen hundred to five thousand dollars. That's not that much, because college is so expensive and blah, blah, blah. So the second part of what you said is really the important part, which is it's Futures is not just we're writing a check.
Right.
Futures is all the work you do to really work with these kids.
Yeah.
To put them in a position to navigate all this stuff, all the the fastest stuff and Pell Grants and all the other stuff that we really challenging on their own to try to do. It's the value add you bring to the table, and then the and then that money just becomes, you know, the little extra to bridge the gap, but most of our students are able to go free. I think that's the important. It's less about it's less about how big is the check that gets written. It's more, you know, most students are going and it's not costing them money, or it's or we're at least able to cover the different the the cost of a UNH education.
Yeah, and that's another big goal of mine is just that financial literacy and helping them understand the implications of taking out student loans and that if they don't have to, don't. Because, yeah, especially for these students, you know, they're such hard workers. I mean, they're I really have the best job in the world. I love working with the kids in the program and just for them to see and know, I think their goals and their visions of their future are so tied to finances and living a comfortable life and not having to struggle and worry. And so for them to know that they'll get a four-year bachelor's degree and be able to just hit their ground running with the rest of their life, I think, is really important to them. So that's kind of my goal.
Brian, and then Pip.
So how do how do kids get into this program and like, what's the sort of the is there like a cap size?
Yeah.
Like you have, and what is it like sophomore year they get in or junior year?
Yeah, so we have essentially students have to qualify financially. So that has kind of varied over the years, what that looks like. As of right now, we're using the guidelines set by Portsmouth Housing Authority, just because it feels like that's a fair sort of level to be at for students. So that's kind of our barometer financially, financial wise. And then students are typically recommended in eighth grade by one of the two team leaders at the middle school. They're huge supportive of the program, and I really can't thank them enough for all the work that they do to prep students and really talk to them about the program. So students are kind of identified in eighth grade first. And if students go through the application process, we'll do an interview, and then if the students are accepted, they start in the fall of their freshman year. We've found that giving students an opportunity to kind of mature a little bit from eighth grade to tenth grade, it really makes a big difference for some of them. So I'll kind of keep an eye on students. Usually, I'll get a list from the middle school of all the kids they kind of identified as maybe being a good fit for the program. And if they don't apply in eighth grade, I'll kind of keep my eye on them during ninth grade and then reach out to them at some point. So kind of right now, I'm doing that with the ninth graders that were identified last year, reaching out to them, talking to them about Futures, seeing if they're interested, and just kind of making sure they know how to access me and what the program is. We've gotten a little bit more flexible in terms of like the sophomore and even junior acceptances, because our rates have been or our numbers had been lower on the lower end. And each year we say this, but I'm also on the Scholarship Committee at the high school. And every single year we see students that have, it used to be a zero EFC, but now it's a negative fifteen hundred SAI. And we look at them, they're great students, they're going to a four-year college, and we say, what happened? How did how did what where's the missed connection? So I'm trying to kind of pull kids in, even if it happens to be from you know, maybe later on in sophomore year or start of junior year, and maybe they miss those first two years of curriculum. I'd rather them jump in at the last two years and get sort of the meat of let me help you through this process and make sure that I get you to that next step than saying, oh, you're not a sophomore, so I can't take you. That's sort of my philosophy on it. Did I answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Pip. Was it Carrie? No. Pip, Carrie, Lisa.
I was on the the advisory board just before.
I think we just kissed each other.
Exactly, just before you came on. And I just, I think it's such an incredible program. It was really a cool thing to be a part of, and I think one of the things that makes it so special is that it's like the buy-in that the kids seem to have, because I think a lot of scholarships and stuff are just sort of like, I don't know, there's not, there's not this like personal investment in power that seems to come with the program. So I think you guys do an incredible job of that. Um, I wanted to ask about the the change that you're making.
Yeah.
Where you have a school board representative listed as one of the people. I'm just curious, is that specific to a port to the Portsmouth School just school board, or could it be one from any of the area schools?
That's a great question. So I believe it's required that there is a Portsmouth School Board representative. But we did in the past, as you know, we had Allison Dunn from SAU fifty, and we also had at one point Steve Zadrevec stayed on as the SAU fifty superintendent. So I mean, I think that SAU fifty or fifty two community member, it absolutely could be a school board member from SAU fifty or a different district.
I bet that school board.
I believe that's a requirement, yeah, for the program, I'm pretty sure.
I that's my understanding.
Okay.
I guess if we go way back, but it's always been that way as far as I as long as I've been involved.
So I can revise this to to say that I see I see fifty two.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what it is, that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah.
Lisa.
Yeah, I guess I was curious from the years, the recent years, there was one year that had far more students, and I wondered if you did anything different that year, or was that just a lucky bubble or what happened? Because it was a better.
My sophomore year.
For that group, you said it was around eleven or so. I'm sorry, my memory is.
That's fine. Yeah, so the sophomore class has eleven students, which is our biggest year, and the reason for that honestly is I think people within the high school maybe knowing me more, being more aware that I'm there and coming down and saying, hey, I know this student, I think they'd be a really good fit. And just kind of that word of mouth coming from people in the school also who just maybe have different relationships with students, like maybe their child is friends with a student that they say, you know, you might not realize it from sort of that appearance, but the student could really use some additional support. So it's really just those kind of referrals that I've gotten. It's always constantly a struggle to try to get people in because of the financial app aspect, because it really is something that people have to self-identify or feel comfortable to share. And so there was a period of time, I think, you know, obviously during COVID, when people didn't have to apply for free and reduced lunch. And now they do, and I think some people maybe are still catching on to the fact that they have to do the application. So then we don't have access to knowing, okay, are you eligible for the opportunity fund? Can I know that maybe you qualify that way? It's sort of a lot of calling students down and saying, please take this letter home and bring it to your parent or your guardian, and if it fits you, then come back and see me and we'll talk more. But the financial aspect can be tough. So it's kind of a fine line of trying to reach out to kids, but also it's such a fragile topic for people. So that's kind of the hardest part, I would say.
Carrie. Do you, I should know this, but I don't. Do you recruit or include students at Lister as well?
That's a great question and something I've kind of thought about, too. We actually had a student who was in the program, and he got accepted in eighth grade and then transferred to a different school and came back to PHS at some point of his freshman year, and I said, absolutely, come back. I would love to have you in Futures. And then he ended up at Lister and I would love for there to somehow be a connection between, if there could be. I think that's a great opportunity, too, but I don't think it's been something that has happened thus far.
I I just was thinking that would be really important, and I know that a lot of there are a larger proportion of folks from in public housing.
Yep.
At Lister, so that target may be there, but also there's a lot of transition to higher education, which may not have been historically consistent.
Yeah. That's a great point.
Yes, Genevieve.
The tuition assistance, is it strictly for for your college, or do you do trade schools?
That's a great question. So it's traditionally been for two and four-year schools. I think that's something, too, that we've kind of been tossing around, because especially with the CTE program at PHS, we do have so many students that go into welding, or I actually have a student right now who is in his freshman year of an auto program at Lakes Region. It's a two-year program, so he's doing that. But yeah, it's tough, because it kind of does, it has traditionally always been like a two or a four-year degree, but I hear you in terms of the trades, because those students are not eligible for federal financial aid for those programs. So I know that that definitely is a gap. I don't have as many students that are have expressed that interest, but it is absolutely an area that we can we can kind of go down. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions from anyone? Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Now, we want, do we need a vote?
We have voting change.
Exactly what is the changes of the membership of the?
Yeah, the membership. And then do you want me to?
Yes.
Resend the SAU fifty?
Yes.
School board representative from SAU fifty two. Okay.
A motion.
Okay, move to approve the amended bylaws, so the updated bylaws.
Second. Any discussion? I guess just that modification. Yes, we have that change.
Perfect.
Which change?
It's going to say a school board representative from SAU fifty.
Okay.
FAU fifty two, right?
Sorry.
Okay.
Supposed to.
You want me to?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
The school board representative is SAU fifty two. And then the community member might be fifty.
Could be a fifty person.
Yeah.
Okay, I get what you're saying.
Yeah. They're not trying to exclude fifty, but I think it's important as a fifty two board member.
Yeah, we've always had a board member from this board.
Yes.
On the
Futures Board.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want me to just email that to Paul at tomorrow? The updated bylaws, is that okay? Perfect. Be good. I'll do that.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Lee, are you there?
Sorry, I struggled with the mute button. Yes.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport. Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Yes.
Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, great.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks a lot, Jay.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the present three point.
Yeah, as usually a summary of emails you've all received previously. Then we have the resignation from Kim Vargo, math teacher of high school. You have that 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 letter from her, which does not require official action. And then, but then you have Brian. Do you have any questions on the other items?
Any questions for Zach? What? May I ask if there, if you have it off the top of your head for an update on our districting numbers for next?
I don't, but I can bring at the next meeting, they can do an update. Yep, we have been, we're in the, we were definitely right in the midst of talking. We're to the point where we have our responses from from parents, and we are the last step for us was we're sitting down, looking at enrollments and trying to figure out how many teachers we needed each building in terms of moving around the elementary staff. So that was the step that we were at the last time that we were talking. So we're pretty far along at this point, and but I'm happy to do an update.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Go on to Brian Sisnerow.
You'll see in your backup, the I mean, at the expense and revenue reports and my summary as well, really nothing much. For the exception of the revenue side, we actually a large influx revenue, mainly because our tuition payment from SAU fifty came in point six million dollars. We had our state building unit come in about three hundred and seventy seventy thousand. Grants again are coming in strong, so we're we're pretty good on the revenue side. Expense side is still in line. We're starting to get ready for the end of the year, trying to figure out where we move money, what's what's over, what's under, but nothing that concerns me at this point. I'll take any questions anybody may have.
Any questions for Brian? Brian, what is the state building aid? Is that from?
That's from the middle school.
Oh, so wow, we're still getting money.
Yep.
That goes back to two thousand and thirty.
We've got about I think four more years left on it, but it goes it goes down as we get.
Okay.
So that's not gonna be there forever.
Any other questions? Carrie. Carrie.
I think just with the cost, the building cost deficit around modular install, you know, there's some question that came up around redistricting around the open place for two years, so maybe if that can be looped into that. And I'm just curious to get, know what the on loan cost is for next year.
Least costs are forty two thousand dollars a year.
The least. The least.
On the modulars.
Right, and it's just utility stuff that we'd have to figure out back. So we'll get see if we can get them before we break that up. So the big, I mean, the more, year one was where the big cost.
Yeah.
Those are all installation.
All the installation stuff, and then and one of the challenges that that pumped up how how expensive it was, was we got, because we got stuck in that back and forth with the city council, it got us into a late window for the work through we're gonna do. So I mean, you know, I don't I don't have what the, you know, did that cost us ten percent? Did that cost us forty percent in terms of our costs, that delay? That's hard. Um that's hard to, that's hard to estimate, but definitely, we definitely took a hit in year one compared to where we thought we were gonna be as a result of having to wait until June to have that work by last, so.
What else? Byron?
Just on the uh, we have this year and then we're contracted the two year lease is for next year as well.
So completes twenty twenty five, twenty six will be the end of our.
Of our contract.
We don't, we don't have an intent at the moment, um you know, we'll, so we get into the fall, we start talking budget again. Building needs, but I would say right now, if we had a forecast, we would not intend to extend the modular beyond uh the next school.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian and Zach? How about financial?
Thank you, Brian.
You, you're doing a great job, Brian, keeping us on, keeping us um legal.
Rather be keeping you excited with my financial reports, but I know that's.
Next on the agenda is the appointment of the ethics committee.
It's drawing time.
Yay, raffle time.
Very excited. So just as a, just as a reminder, so on a annual basis, we, for the board, the city's board of ethics. Uh we need to uh draw a representative. Uh the um the, the board of ethics does not meet unless there is a need to meet. So, um but the each of the charter departments has uh somebody, the council has somebody um who would be part of the board of ethics if there was an ethics complaint. Uh we do not appoint the person, we, it is through random draw. Uh and um and so those who have been around for a while, was it, one of my favorite moments on the board was uh Ann Walker, um former board member, uh had served on the board of ethics and had and, and they had gone through a complaint and it was a very lengthy situation. And then we had to draw names the next year and Ann, um who would never swear. I pulled out, I pulled out, I pulled out the names and it was Ann again to go back onto the back onto the board of ethics and she just looked at me and said, your name is mud. One of my favorite, one of my favorite moments with this.
And her name's in there now.
Bring her back, bring her back. So um so I sense Ann wanted to get in a fight with me at a board meeting. I have not wanted all these names ever again. So Nancy, I will let you, yes, Patty.
I'm, I'm the hated one. Are there slips of paper in here? Okay, there they are.
All the same size.
Yes, I couldn't even find them.
Know the jagged one's yours, that's the one we.
Oh, Lisa.
There you go.
So again, does not, the board of ethics does not um uh very often does not meet whoever was on it last time around. Um but if it needs to meet, Lisa would be our representative, so.
Thank you, Lisa. So nobody screw up.
Behave yourself, yes.
Exactly.
Okay, and I have to confess, I found an email from Tish dated April ninth that said she wouldn't be here tonight. All right, apologize, Tish, if you're listening, she did let us know that she wouldn't be here tonight, so. And Tish, you did not get picked for the ethics committee, so that's. Okay, um next we have consideration and approval of the suicide plan and we'll turn it over to Patty.
It's technically the suicide prevention plan.
Okay.
Um it's a little bit better sounding, so. Yeah, prevention plan. So this plan was developed, uh actually not developed, but it was sort of reviewed and updated uh through the work of counselors, nurses, social workers, school psychologists in the district. Um couple of new pieces since the last iteration, there is now an appendix C which goes through a checklist when there's a student concern, how to respond, whether it happens at school. If it happens after hours, um and what the follow up and documentation need to be so that anybody can use this checklist to make sure that they're doing everything that they need to do in order to provide support to any of the students who might need that. Um also, we will continue to use and it is found in appendix G. The Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale, there's a screener. Um G and H, that will continue to be used. There will be another set of training offered um to all of the counselors uh coming up, I believe in a couple of weeks. Lisa Jacobus, the social worker, is coordinating that so that they are all brought up to speed. And we will be offering the same training to administrators probably this summer so that they are aware in case they need to uh use this with students and a counselor or somebody else is not available to use that. Um and all of those would be housed in what we have um for an online repository um to manage those cases for student need. Um there are also um some adjustments in the plan just overall about how to respond after hours. Um and then just some advice for responding if a guardian or parent doesn't follow through with what they've said they were going to do, how do we, how do we follow up with that? What do we do as a district? So it's very comprehensive, they really, a lot of hands on, minds on this, they've really gone through with a fine tooth comb. Um they're very proud of it. I am, I cannot speak more highly about the work that was done. Um and so I would uh recommend that the board approve the implementation of this plan. Um so that we can get the training and everything else we need done.
Most to approve?
Okay.
Discussion.
I just think this is great. I think it's very comprehensive and I appreciate all your work on all of the plans we have tasked you with.
This, this one was easy because I kind of like just, they did it, so I like that. They, they're very capable, so.
And we have Lisa and Pip.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
No, it, it does feel like it's much clearer in terms of how it's laid out and the process compared to some of the previous versions of it over the years, which I hope will be more helpful to people who have to figure out what to do when they're in this situation. I think the one piece that I was curious about is how do we handle if a student comes forward and asks for help? Or if a parent reaches out to the school and says, I think my kid might need help because we're hearing something at home. Am I missing that or is that baked in here somewhere?
So that's within, and then that's also part of the training that the counselors will be going through for what to do and outreach and things like that. So this looks specifically at what happens with students and staff, but if parents reach out because there's a concern. Counselors will step in, counselors will provide, and I would also point out appendix it's G. Has a list F, has a list of resources. And we've also bolstered those, so that's something that the counselors would have on hand and the administrators would have on hand to provide to families who might need it because there are um different places that we can get some support. But they do know how to respond in that case.
Pip. Um going backwards with regard to what you just said, it doesn't seem like the suicide hotline is on this list.
It's on appendix F, right at the top in red.
Oh, oh my God, okay, that's funny because I totally missed it because I was thinking the other, wow, okay. Um well, that's good. Hopefully other people see that better than I.
And, and because of state law, that number is also printed on the back of every student ID. So students have those, um it's readily available near phones and things like that, so.
Okay. Um I agree with what Carrie said, I'm really pleased to see how this is developed. And uh I have a couple of questions. One is um there's, I think it's page four. I was a little confused and concerned about the fact that um that there's one bullet point that says if a parent or guardian does not respond, the school will contact New Hampshire Rapid Response Access Team. Which makes sense and there's a phone number, but then the next option is if those people aren't available, then you're gonna email someone at Seco's Mental Health. And that seemed to me like not a very efficient way to get help. So I was just curious why there was no phone number associated with.
It's my understanding and this is something that, again, I could get more information, but there is somebody who's monitoring that.
Okay.
It's not like it's gonna go into some. That's their preferred way, yeah.
That makes sense. Um and then um I also know there's some, some cases where, where the police start to be called and then others where an ambulance might be called, and I just wondered if you could speak to that a little bit because I know that there's some, you know, there's some um data that suggests that bringing in police early on is not necessarily the best concept, um because it can be triggering for students.
Depending on the risk and the need involved, police might be able to get in contact with other resources more quickly. They might have things available, it wouldn't necessarily be, if you're calling the police about this, you're not gonna send out the typical, what you might think of as the beat cop, they're gonna send the appropriate response. So that might be just a way to get help there. And also to get alert to if there's something going on at home. Because not only do we have this situation, but there's a concern with something going on at home, it's a little bit more comprehensive.
Okay.
So I think that they're just trying to cover all their bases.
We're lucky in Portsmouth to have cops who are well trained in that area, so that's good. Um my last question is uh that I'm, I'm really glad that the, the staff is getting trained, do we, are we doing any training with students on either?
So students, students do receive this through their regular health classes, there is, they do have conversations with students about this to make sure, and i- if you think back to some of the presentations that were had last year with some of the groups. Um I know that there are groups at the high school and some at the middle school where students do work to uh support each other.
But this plan is intended specifically for adult staff.
Yep.
Thank you.
Carrie.
Carrie. Totally a, a pain, a, a la, 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 I can't speak tonight, an appendix A. Can we change the capitalizations so it's consistent? I know that's really annoying. And then in appendix F, I just, I I don't know if this, this is from like a clinical perspective, like reordering this in some way? Because I think for a suicidal team, my first would be Seco's Mental Health and then Seco's Youth Services because they have both emergency clinicians or, I mean, or rapid response. But like NAMI is a great advocacy organization, but not clinical services. And then I was very curious about see why Seco's probation and parole was on there.
That was something that was suggested by one of the counselors, I would have to find out more about that.
My guess is it's for ki- kids who might be involved with the law.
Already in the system.
Because that was mentioned elsewhere.
But we could prioritize Seco's Mental Health and Seco's Youth Services.
I think.
List everything else.
It carries funny, it might, it might be good to have like categories like what you're saying, like um
Emergency on call. Provider.
People know.
Okay.
Why they're calling which one.
Yeah, like, yeah, what they offer, I think would be good. Because like families first, we won't, we can't do emergency intakes, we would only do it if they're our kid or if they're already a patient. So same with Portsmouth P, same with, so it could be any of the pediatrics offices. Would be their best entry, do, do you see what I'm saying? Whereas Seco's Youth Services and Seco's Mental Health will take intakes from anyone in a crisis.
Okay.
Hey, Lisa, sorry, I had one other question, I forgot before, but we do collect as part of our registration a pediatrician contact or a doctor contact, do we have any? This wouldn't be the emergency response, but I'm just curious in the follow up if there's any touch point with the child's regular medical provider as part of this.
I don't know that we would do that, I think um that might be something that would be the conversation with the family.
And sometimes it depends, I mean, in those situations.
Just because they might have.
I mean, usually, you know, sometimes it's a release and we're, so we've got our people reaching out, we're trying to figure out where the line is for our folks, but very often something's happened and we think we have a good partnership with the family, it's like, can you please give us a release with your, your child's counselor? Um and sometimes families are willing to do that and sometimes they aren't, um so, but usually, I'd say, usually that's how it all comes together.
Yes, Eric.
I was just curious, you referred to after hours, wh- what does that define as?
So after school, weekends, vacations, you know, because everything happens after three o'clock on a Friday and the Friday before vacation. That's so.
That's so true.
It, we, we're not, it's not even a joke because that's when it happens. And so it's the after hours where you don't have hands on, eyes on, it's not ten o'clock in the art class, it's happening at three thirty on the field and nobody's around.
Right.
So.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Okay.
We're gonna vote on that. I think all those suggestions made sense.
We can make, we can make the adjustments.
Or just to just.
I mean, because what I heard was, well, we had the the formatting issue and then uh and then.
Capitalization.
Re-se- resequencing in, in appendix F with some type of
categorizing.
Quick synopsis of what the actual entity does, those sound like the two big ones, right?
You might wanna just put as of or twenty three um emergency, just because services change. You know, so, but you can just kind of put that piece of when it was confirmed.
Yep. Okay.
You can email, that'd be great. Byron Mado.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte. Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Yes.
Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
That extra time helped me with the uh the mute button, so thank you. Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Now we'll, we'll go on, we'll continue with Patty on the um focus area three update.
So this is just an update, um we had had some conversations about what we were doing with focus area three, which was the safety, well being and belonging. And what the steering committee has been trying to do is to um collect and analyze data on student engagement and academics and school culture, which was one of the objectives listed under the key performance indicators and targets. Um we are, through many efforts and trying to figure out what we have and what we don't have, we are at the, at the point where we know we don't have enough information to collect uh to do anything with. So we have contracted with Panorama Education to create custom surveys that will enable us to collect the information from students and staff uh in May. I did meet with them on Monday. We have uh two comprehensive surveys developed, a couple of things have to be tweaked before those can go out. Those will go out to students and those will go out to staff. Um the questions that we're using are valid and reliable questions that have been developed and vetted by Panorama, so they are their questions that have the anchor information with them. Uh we will be using those questions to create the surveys, students grades five through twelve will participate. We will be making sure to alert parents as this is going to be a non academic survey so that they will know ahead of time. Um and it will also go out to all faculty and staff at all the schools, including faculty or staff at central office. So we will get information from all of those. The student survey is going to focus on school belonging, engagement, safety and student teacher relationships. The staff surveys across all of those entities will focus on climate, belonging, well being and support. Um partnering with Panorama allows us to create an unlimited number of surveys, not that we want to do death by survey, but it's nice that we can then follow up in the fall with additional information to gather or different um kinds of things that we can gather using the surveys that we have available. Um and we'll see what we can get from the information we gather.
And the, the great thing about Panorama too is that they allow us to do, puts us in a position to do longitudinal data. So we can over time track kids over, and again, the questions are all vetted. Um they, um these are surveys that have been used by, you know, um I'm, I'm sure back when I was originally using these, it was in the hundreds of thousands and now it's probably far, far, far exceeding that in terms of the number of times the questions have been used. Um so I'm very excited about um about us moving in this direction. I think it's gonna be very powerful for us to get this other perspective about what is the student and staff experience in those in the districts and have it not just revolve around some of the other indicators we've had in the past, so this is great.
Lisa, Byron, Pip, Genevieve.
I love that you're getting these standardized questions and the ability to get longitudinal data over time. I'm curious, since we're starting with these question sets, do they provide any sort of benchmarks? Like we've asked this particular question to schools and all these other places, and so we would know a typical fifth grader says this to this que- I mean.
Absolutely, that's the other thing that's.
I was just curious when we get started, would we have any idea of where hypothetically might we be at for a district this size? When we get started, would we have any idea of where hypothetically might we be at for a district this size or like how can we know where we're.
Break it out by, you can break it out by all kinds of different demographic data. So you can say, how does this, all the, all, you know, all
Fifth grade girls.
Yeah.
Fifth grade girls at Don Darrow.
Right.
Like we could go very deep.
Socioeconomic status.
Yep.
IEP status. You could, and then compare those variables across their huge data set. So it's really like, it's, it's super powerful to be able to say, okay, so here's a snapshot of this question. And then what do, where are we on the, and very often the responses overall are on a bell curve. So where are we in relation to bell curve with any particular group and any particular year? And that is like, that's super, it leads to super powerful conversations. And the other thing is that it doesn't put us in a situation, the numbers are all kind of pre-chewed for us. So if you put teachers together, administrators together, or community members together in teams, or we bring stuff back to you, we're not crunching the numbers ourselves. It's all pre-crunched. And you have the ability to sort it the way you want to sort it on the fly. So there's all kinds of possibilities about, about what, having guided conversations around the data that can, that are not so narrow that they're not helpful. You can really kind of play and explore as teams around what we think's going on. And in the long run, and I think in this case, we're talking about, we're not talking about open-ended questions and.
There will be some open-ended questions in the staff survey, only because we think that they could sustain it. Students, we've got to sort of grow their ability to take surveys, so.
Yeah.
I want more pizza.
Yeah, well, yes, there it is. Exactly.
Byron.
Thank you. Yeah. So references in the third paragraph, the strategic plan stated dashboard.
Yes.
And then in the, onto the strategic plan, it has the data dashboard as like a row for the focus area, a couple of different focus areas. Is data dashboard an actual place where there's like.
No, no.
Not a living.
That's, that's, that's the dashboard of the data that we're collecting.
But I would.
Yeah.
Yes, very often the nomenclature, a data dashboard is like, where's the page?
Yeah.
Where we're, so I think I would have real interest in us looking at, how do we do, it doesn't have to be super complex, but some basic data visualization. That's, that's public forward.
Yeah.
For people to see kind of where we're at and on some of these initiatives. Sure.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think we had Pip and then Genevieve.
I am super excited that this is happening. I know I already said that too, but I just feel like it's been so many years that we've been talking about needing more concrete data. And so I, I think partnering with Panorama is going to be a great way to do it. I wondered, I think, actually, the only question I have is whether we could consider including, and maybe this is like a next step, including some people who have graduated already and, and who can reflect on their experiences. Because I think we've gotten, over the years, we've gotten some, some feedback from students who were in Portsmouth schools. And I think sometimes that, that ability to look back on their experiences is really helpful. And even though it's not current experience, it's sort of like, these are the people that we're sending off into the world. So it might be informative in terms of our portrait of graduate who we are, really are graduating and what their experiences were. So.
Those are, I mean, those are hard. We can definitely pursue it. I know every place I've been, it's been hard because it's the, once they're gone, you can't.
It's hard to track.
Sometimes you can't find them.
Yeah.
Sometimes, you definitely can't force them.
The piece.
You know, it can't be, so.
So it might be a little biased.
But I know, right, and there's some, yeah, there's some selection bias, right? So, so, but then I think so there is some hard data, which is different because you're talking about alums looking back and reflecting on like, well, this set me up well for this or didn't or now in retrospect, they, they accept and say.
Yeah.
But there are, there are data sets for us through the National Clearinghouse, I'm trying to leave it out of term. But basically it's the, it's a coalition of colleges and universities.
Talks about that.
They, then basically they track for their, their own data. They want to track like what happens with students when they get to, when they get to schools, how many of them have to drop out after the first two years? How many of them have to take remedial courses? You know, what schools are kids going to? So that data, if we were to subscribe, it's not unbelievably expensive. It's available to us to, to mine. Now, the data part of tracking our students, well, the easiest way to track our students is when, when we have social security numbers, but there's a lot of here now. Usually if we have other characteristics, we can usually track down students. But anyways, it gives us a snapshot of like what's happening over the last five years. What schools are our kids going to? How successful those? But it is limited, that particular snapshot is limited to that that coalition of, of national colleges and universities. So when, it's not going to give you a picture of, you know, students who are entering military service, students that are, are, you know, are, are apprenticing in the trades, you know.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have some of those pictures, but at least give a snapshot about preparedness for, for post-secondary education.
Okay.
Genevieve.
So my question is on the questions. What questions are being posed? Is that going to be something that's presented prior to? Is it presented to parents? Is it isolated? Because I've heard some very horrific things in the media recently about questionnaires, polls presented to children regarding some very private information. And schools releasing that, not informing parents. And as a parent of a middle schooler, that is something that's presenting information that's not prepared or appropriate for ages or without a parent's approval. My concern is in approving something like that, who's approving the questions?
So the parents will be able to see the questions ahead of time. That's part of the school policies and procedures. So we will make sure that parents see that ahead of time. Questions are very, I don't want to say generic, but it's not going to get into sensitive information. Do you like to come to school? What, you know, when you feel, when you come to school, do you feel happy most of the time? Do you, do you have friends? Do you feel safe at school? Do you like the way that your teacher talks to you? Those kinds of questions. So parents will be able to see the questions ahead of time.
And they will have the opportunity, excuse me, to opt out.
Absolutely.
If they choose to.
Yep. If parents do not think that their student should participate, that's an option.
And the student themselves can choose to opt out as well.
Yep.
Thank you, Genevieve. Anyone else? Okay, Patty. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to hearing more in the future. Okay, next on the agenda is our legislative, oh no, consideration and approval of the APT collective bargaining agreement.
So we had.
Before we start, do we have a motion to accept the contract?
So.
Ryan and Carrie. Okay, thank you. Discussion.
So I'd just say, I would say, okay, public, just in terms of transparency for the, for the public. So there is some language, there are some language changes in the, in the old contract to the new, but I think the key kind of things that people typically are interested in is the, financially what's going on. The, this is, would be a three-year agreement with the teachers in year one of that agreement. The, the full salary scale would get a 10-year rolling cost of living adjustment. Basically that's an inflationary measure based around the greater Boston area. And there's a 10-year rolling average. The city uses this on a lot of contracts around the city. I think it's a good idea, good way to incorporate kind of maintaining people's purchasing power without going beyond that and trying to stick to inflation. So in year one, it's the current 10-year rolling average of that inflationary measure of kind of the greater Boston bucket. It's 2.84% to the entire scale. Then in year two and three, it'll be again, the 10-year rolling, 10-year rolling COLA adjusted for the next couple of years with a floor where we would go no lower than 3%, no high, no higher than 5%. I think mathematically what we're anticipating is that most likely, regardless of where we were, where the inflationary measures look like in the next year or so, we were going to be close to three anyways. So that three, that 3% floor felt pretty reasonable. And then on health insurance, the, in each of the years, the teachers gave back a, a percentage point in terms of the premium costs back to the city. So those are the big financial pieces of the package for the public. And then just in terms of process, the teachers have already ratified the agreement. And then it comes to, to all of you and if you come to the conclusion that you can agree to it, then it'll be pushed to the city council and we anticipate that that would be sometime in late May or early June, that the city council will then approve the contract. I would just say the other, other procedural piece with that is that, as you know, you approved the list of people who were receiving contracts at a previous meeting with no numbers attached to them. So we have already issued contracts to those folks. But once the contract gets approved, then we send another wave that has now has the dollar amount still there. So, all right, that's all I'm thinking.
Any questions? When, when do we find out the COLA increase? What, what, what time?
So. Comes the first week of December.
First week of December.
It's a November, they do the November COLA. It's the only report. The CIP, CIP.
CIPU.
CIPU comes out every quarter. They just happen to use the one in November.
Okay.
And that's the one the city's always use as they're rolling. So we get a memo from finance, usually around December 7th, 10th, 12th, somewhere around there. Where that's the state, that's the citywide COLA we'll be using.
So do we just budget at 5% thinking that that's the highest it could go or do we kind of just like?
Well, it depends if it's a contract year or not. In a contract year, you always use their current salary. But they have an evergreen clause meaning that they can get a step if they qualify. Otherwise they get held. There they are. So this will be budgeted for them, basically static. Next year we will know by the time you get it, we will already have that number. I will know what that is and I will be plugged in next year. So I won't worry about.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I guess we can take a vote.
Okay. Carrie Nolte.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Here.
Yes or no?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Brian French.
Yes.
Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Yes.
Eric, tell the teachers we're happy we have an agreement.
And now we just off to the city council we go.
Yep. And they usually, they look for the teachers first because it's the largest.
Usually sets the tone.
So it sets the tone for, yeah, the rest of the city. Okay, we will move on to, now we can move on to Lisa. Lisa, thank you for incredible hard work on this committee. You've been amazing. So thank you so much. So I hand it over to you.
So we got ambitious on the committee this year, partly in response to the hundreds more education bills in Concord this year than even last year, which was also a record. Just to sort of tee this up for everyone, we agreed as a board several years ago when we set up our legislative committee that we would only advocate around four specific legislative principles. We focus on promoting student health and safety, funding public education and public school construction, empowering our local administrators and educators to set curriculum and maintaining the ability of our local school board to set policy for us. So there are certainly many other things that happen every year that fall outside of those areas, which we simply as a board agreed that we wanted to narrow our focus. So there's many bills that you all may be watching that are certainly worth advocating for or against as an individual, but just aren't the focus of this board. We also agreed as a board that when we take positions on legislation to try to keep it as consensus-driven as possible, that we only take positions when we have a super majority, two-thirds vote. So since we only have eight people present tonight, I believe we still need six people to vote in favor for motions to pass. So I just want to tee things up in that way. In the packet, I know you all have tons of free time to read through all of the links, but I did go through and hyperlink under each motion in the packet to the individual bill analysis in past democracy. That's the platform that the New Hampshire School Boards Association uses to do their bill analysis. And I tried to organize them. So the first few deal with school funding and then we move on to a batch that looks specifically at curriculum and then a batch that look at policy. We did look at some bills around student health and safety this year, but as a committee, we didn't find anything that we felt at the end of the day would have a substantial impact on our district. So that's why that's missing from the list. It's not because we didn't look, but just because for whatever reason, there didn't seem to be as much that jumped out this year with, we felt that we need to advocate around. There were several around credentialing, but the sense Zach did check in with our school nurse and some other folks around the district about some of the credentialing changes. And it didn't appear that it would change anything for us in terms of our ability to hire the type of qualified people that we want to hire. So that's sort of why that's missed. So we did take a stab as a committee of grouping bills together by topic in case anyone is feeling comfortable making a motion to look at bills as a batch. Certainly people can pull things out as they wish for more detailed discussion. But I'll start with the most optimistic idea. If anybody's feeling really bold and wants to make a motion to do the entire lot of them at once, I would entertain that motion.
That's exactly what I was going to move to do.
Really?
You mean just on the school funding or, or the whole, the whole?
She's starting the most.
I'm feeling really optimistic. It's nice and early tonight. I think we should, you know, wrap up.
Looking aside, the way that I've set them all up is when you're voting, you're voting either to oppose or support and then the bill numbers are there. And then we write a very brief statement, kind of reiterating why we think that position is aligned with the principles that this board has approved previously. And then once these are done, what happens is I go into the legislative website and I can enter in that statement on behalf of the board. And then anyone who wants to go and testify in Concord and say, I'm on the board, our board voted to oppose or support this. And then you can speak with, we were not really getting into the weeds of whether people have time to do that the last minute, but that's the process. So, yeah.
I'll be a little more restrained. But I, I, first I want to say I really appreciate the way that you've laid this out for us because it was really very helpful in understanding it all. But I would like to move to approve, oh, wait. I don't know how to say it.
Except the recommendation?
Yes, thank you. I'd like, I would, I will move to accept the recommendations for school funding positions.
Okay, so there's only two unders.
So there's two.
Okay, only two.
There's only two under school funding. So Pip, we have motion and seconded.
And then discussion.
I, it's funny, when I look at this educational funding account, I'm all in favor of educational funding. When our public schools are 100% perfect. So this has always bugged me, this bill. I mean, sure, let people spend money on whatever they want, but first we have to make our public schools perfect. We have to give all the money we need to give to public schools. You know, then we can set up. So I'm deeply in favor of that, that bill.
I saw Carrie.
Yeah, so just thinking about the time, so like for New Hampshire crossover was like May, some of these had hearings today or within the last month or, you know, so all of this. Is there, are there any here that are like priority, like, like hearings this week type?
So. Okay, so these have all moved out of their original house. Yeah, we had a meeting about two weeks ago with New Hampshire School Board Association. And at that point, really whittled down our list from about, I don't know, 50 or 60 bills down to about 20 and then further whittle down the list based on both their guidance on what they thought was most likely to pass and reach the governor based on some feedback from them about which ones were a little bit more posturing versus more likely to have meaningful impact on our district. And so that is what this list is. So I think what we did last year was when we put in the statement, we said, based on the bill as written on this date when we turned it in. So like I checked these like yesterday, so I didn't check this morning in the interest of full disclosure, but I went through them all yesterday. They're all correct. So they haven't changed from when they went into the packet to yesterday. I didn't have time today to take one more look, but I can certainly do that before we submit any statements. But I think that's how we. Submit any statements, but I think that's how we handled that last year because you're absolutely right. They could be amended. Something could slip into the budget or come out of the budget. Things can change all the way up to the last minute here in New Hampshire. So. All we can really do is make a position based on the information we have in front of us.
And I was just gonna say too, that timing wise, I think one of the things we've been trying to gauge. Is when's the right time that we want to get probably one bite of the apple with all of you collectively. And um, and uh, last year, I think we felt like we were a little late. So this is, so we were, so we, we were trying to act as fast as we could basically as we came in the crossover. And we moved from one house to the other. It was like, okay, let's quickly come to decisions and get back to the board so that there's still. Process happening that we could impact and not wait, like we almost waited too long last year probably is.
It was late May, I think, by the time we took our vote.
So this is sooner. By design.
And Lisa, I believe you wanted to go and testify to any of these.
Um, we would, I know you can go. Online and find out when, but uh.
I'm so glad you asked that. So if you click on the bill tracker that we have in here, all the hearing dates are in there for each bill. So if you were to click into any one of the bills in the packet, you'll see where it was last. And if there's a hearing scheduled for the upcoming week, it'll tell you the date and the time.
Okay.
What is challenging this time of year is those get updated sometimes Friday or Monday morning for a hearing that's. In the best case scenario, at least twenty-four hours out, but sometimes things move very quickly. But you can absolutely go in and see, I didn't check exactly which ones have hearings this week, but. You can see that. Yep.
And um, can you just talk a little bit about the swept? Because I know the city's involved in that, correct?
Should I put Brian on the spot? He would do a better job.
Now, the, these, how it would affect us with swept is about three hundred thousand dollars that we would have to give back. To the state. As it's formulated today. When it finally happens, I mean, or if it passes or doesn't pass, obviously that could change, but I was actually at the DOE last week and I was talking with the. Finance people up there and we were kind of throwing some scenarios out there because. We're one of a few donor towns out there. Well, around here we have a couple, but. Um, we came up with a number approximately three hundred thousand.
And will there be any stipulation that they can't use it on sidewalks or potholes or they have to use it on education? The last time they.
It's supposed, it's supposed to go back and then get redistributed to these other towns, but that's the challenge is. You really can't control those funds once they get to those towns as much as they think they can. Because really they're going into a pot in that town, so. Yeah, we're using it for education, but we're kind of not using it for education. You know, I mean, it's, it's.
And some communities, and some communities are.
Yeah, it does depend.
But it can be, it can be, you know.
Byron, you had a question?
Yeah, so on this, on the impact of swept, so it says here that the uh, rural administration anticipates you. One time implementation cost of three hundred thousand for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Um, I'm a little confused by that because my understanding of swept is that this is sort of like a. Thing that happens.
I think it's the setup of.
That's the admin overhead.
Yeah, the admin overhead to set up the formula.
To get around.
You know, because they gotta look at everybody's taxes, tax rates and taxes, how they're, how they're set up to see how much property they have taxable and. I mean, it's, it's odd because we have, you know, over ten billion dollar taxable property. So sweat brings in a lot of money. You have some small. Bill, almost villages and incorporated towns that. Will get sweat money. So they actually have a negative education tax rate.
Just to clarify in terms of some of the confusion on this, so this, the Lisa underneath like the background, the. Seven three nine background stuff, is that from, that's a summarization of.
That's from the state. So the fact that.
So the three hundred thousand. It's happened since, it's numbers. Yeah, but those are, so that is not the same three hundred thousand that he's talking.
That's what I was, yeah.
So when they're looking at state analysis, they're saying, yes, initially to set up all the mechanism to make this work. There's a three hundred thousand dollar bill to the state to make it happen. It just so happens that our estimate right now is that would also be three hundred thousand dollars that would have previously gone to us. Uh, in additional uh, money that we've collected that then would now be given the state. A couple of years ago. The numbers we were throwing around, it depends on the year, um, eight hundred and one, I mean, I think.
That was at least six, I know it was.
Three or four years ago is, it was a bigger number that doesn't, but that, and that could change over time. So, but, yeah, so.
You'll see the future years for the financial setback or zero because. That's already been set up, the software and everything, so.
That's not zero to us, that's just zero to the state.
Yes.
Already got their framework set.
The claim at zero has never ended up being.
Now, oh, Lisa, may I ask a question? Do they still have the coalition of communities? That's what we had a few years ago where all the donor towns came together to fight this.
I don't think it's active though. I don't.
The city is very active.
Yeah, I mean, city side, the municipalities are, I would say, uh, yeah, the, some of the. School folks are less. It's, it's the municipalities who really know in that conversation. But I don't think that this time, you know. I don't know, it sounds like it's going through.
Yeah, yeah, sure does.
Anything else on the two school funding motions? So we can take a roll call vote to follow those two recommendations on school funding?
Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte.
Yes.
Lisa Rapport.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Yes.
Eight to zero, passed.
Awesome. Alright, so I think the way that I set up the packet, I did, I've got. One motion that combines two bills that both have to do with school curriculum. And our position broadly around that is that these topics are very different. But our thesis as a school district and a board is that we want to have our ability locally to set curriculum and both of these would get in the way of that. So, so that is the rationale for these. I don't know if anyone would like to make a motion to. Look at just that one?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second. So motion to oppose H B. Fifty and five seven.
Thank you. And then discussion.
Zach, you weren't crazy about Constitution Day.
No, I love, look, I, but it's not about the specific topic, topic at all. I mean, I'm a, I'm a longtime civics teacher. Uh, and so it's not about the topic. My concern is about the concept of. The, if the state legislature can just pick random. Days that it's like you will have a constitution day, you will have a whatever day, whatever people feel like in a given year. Um, if, if the legislature gets into that grain size of um. Of telling us what we're going to be doing on a, on a day to day basis, I feel like that's an overreach. So it's not about Constitution Day, not, not anti-constitution. Um, at all, um.
And we teach civics and we have a broad.
Yep, so, uh, so that, and um, that was my concern, just in general. On the grain size and the overreach.
I mean, at the committee level, it was the idea that this shall encompass and then a laundry list of things that have to specifically be taught as opposed to allowing. For perhaps some more organic development of a civics curriculum. So those are the two. Is there any other questions on these?
Just on, on, on that one, is there any sort of precedent around like similar natured? Um, directive from the state?
So many. Um, but.
There's been previous attempts.
Yeah.
I mean, like, like in plain.
Specific to Constitution Day or?
It's generally.
I mean, we've had pass in recent years. There's been, I always think of the one that mandates cursive handwriting instruction. There was one on. Table memorization, um. One that passed on Holocaust studies. It was a similar, like, again, we teach history. But this was a mandate to teach it in a specific way and for a very specific amount of time.
Yeah.
Where it's not so much the objection to the topic as the question of could we fold this in in the way that we want to fold it into our social studies curriculum? As opposed to having this very mandated. Way of doing it. And there are many more. I don't know if I can think of any more off the top of my head at this second.
But there's, I mean, I think we've seen. On an annual basis, we see multiple bills go down that are of this ilk. Uh, that are, somebody has. I'm, I love, you know, it's like, oh, uh, talent, we should have something about Italian heritage. So you should take a day. To teach about the history of Italian heritage in New Hampshire or something, you know, like there's these, there's these one-off bills that will come through that are, that are very specific. So.
And Brian?
Yeah, I just, I'm uncomfortable with both of these, just the um. HP fifty is just. I mean. It just seems like such an overreach and then they can initiate civil actions and.
Yeah, yeah.
Just, it's actually nuts. Um. And then the same with the Constitution Day. I love the Constitution, but to dictate to us what, you know, we need to take all day and then. Um, and I think we should teach the Constitution and talk about the Constitution. Uh, but the teachers should have the ability to weave that in the way they need to weave it in. It just seems like an overreach to me.
Any other? So we can do a roll call on those? This is motion three to oppose H B fifty and H B five seven.
Lisa Rapport.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte. Byron Mado.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Fit clues.
Yes.
Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Yes.
Eight to zero.
So for our next batch of bills. Um, the committee tried very hard to break out the bills around school policy. Into motion four, which we believe should be somewhat straightforward and at least as a committee, we felt like we didn't need to call any of those out. For individual discussion. They all relate to our thesis that we want to set school policy locally and not have the state. Tell us what we can or cannot set as policy in our district. Um, and then after that, following motion four, we broke out some ones that we thought might merit a more nuanced position. And discussion by the board. So I would certainly entertain a motion to do all of the school policy recommendations in one batch. If somebody's feeling like they want to do that, but we set it up this way because we anticipated that there might be some interest in discussion on some of them and. Not others. So.
Move to, uh, move to, uh, sorry. To adopt the recommendations made in number four to oppose the bills listed in number four.
Okay, second.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
Carrie. Um, H B ninety, I guess I just wanted to hear about whether that affects our. Our, or everyone's common practice of like hiring. And. I don't know, I guess, I guess is this flexibility. Necessary for staffing?
So I would say it is not, we had this discussion, I think the conversation was that, and again, remember the makeup of our committee is. Um, is uh, Lisa, Nancy, myself, um, Hannah Dules was a representative from the association. Teachers Association. And so, um, so the conversation was around that question, which was. This, I think this bill is introduced because there are, at least in parts, there are some communities that are struggling. To field a certified staff. Uh, we are not one of those communities. Uh, we now, who knows how long that will be, but right now we're able to hire. Certified staff or staff who are uh, in a position where we can. Or they give them a probationary certification where they're going to finish that out with us. Um, so I think the dialogue was around um, the concern. About decertifying teaching as, as a profession. Uh, and the potential impact that that could have on the system. And I think, so that was a concern of mine, I know, and it was definitely a concern of, of Hannah's. Um, that the, that the union would not see this as a, as a, something they could support.
I guess my, my concern is just that, like. Although I can, I would say our practices, you know, would remain the same of hiring only certified teachers. But I guess I'm a little hesitant to put in opposition to something that is necessary for other districts that. A part-time not certified teacher. May have great benefit to a, a district that has no one is the other option. So I don't know, I mean, I. I guess I.
I think another, I was gonna say one other element of this conversation was. There's a long-term problem that's going to be connected to, to the number of people who are willing to do the work. And that rather than trying to solve that problem by removing the standards of who we put in front of kids. That what we're going to have to deal with is improving. The working conditions and the pay of the people who do that work. In order to have it be something that people actually want to do. Uh, and so that was, that was part of our, part of our dialogue in that maybe this is the wrong system fix. Uh, for, for the challenges that some communities are facing.
But I would just say as a matter of procedure, if you'd like to pull that one out from the batch, because that would change your vote. I mean, anybody.
And I understand the logic.
So we have that long list of bills, but if you want to say, I'd like to take the vote without that one because it would change your vote and. Um, Brian and then PIP?
Um, so just going down through them, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support um, H B two seven three. In general, just because. Just the way I think about uh, parents' rights. Um, but I would support. Um. I guess it's. To be against H B three twenty-four, just because again, that should be local control or we should. You know, that shouldn't be, um. Because again, overreach. Um, I don't think I understand H B five twenty very well. Um, I would support, um. You know, uh, opposition to thirty-three as well. Again, overreach in my mind and not having local control. And same with S B two A, but the one I wouldn't vote for here is the two seventy-three.
Okay.
Um, and I just don't understand five twenty very well.
So. Five twenty has come up every year. And I believe it was either last year or the year before it reached the governor and he vetoed it. I can't recall which year. It essentially gives the Department of Education subpoena power and the history of it is it was paired with the divisive concepts bill that went through the legislature. So if you are concerned about what people are doing with their classrooms. And what specific lessons are being taught on a day-to-day basis. And you want to have more information about that. There has been a push to give them subpoena power so that they can not only. Potentially bring you up and take away your license if they don't believe that you're teaching something that is acceptable under state law. But they also have subpoena power to try to dig more into those materials. Instead of say going through the normal and ordinary process for getting a subpoena, which would be a law enforcement process. So I think in the committee, our discussion was broad overreach also potentially makes. A lot of these bills that are increasingly vague and hard to unpack. Much easier for the State Department of Education to go in with their take on what is meant by the directive. And then collect information that would facilitate investigations against educators in a way that could be disruptive, expensive. And also ultimately put people's certification and credentials on the line. When perhaps they are simply teaching a history lesson or, you know, I mean, it's. I mean, for the committee, the simple answer is it's an overreach from our perspective. Um, and in terms of two seventy-three, again, if you would like to pull that out, you can certainly do that. The issue with that one isn't so much that anybody wants any kid to be accessing stuff or stop parents from having information. But that we have procedures in place as a district that allow parents to get information about what their kids are studying. And to ask questions about, you know, what books they're being assigned. I mean. I've had English teachers send me permission slips home that said, this is the menu of books that your kid is going to be looking at and please sign that you know that there's. You know, sensitive material in some of these books, you know, so I think we have a lot of procedures and policies already on the books. That give parents a lot of ability to know what's being taught and to access it. The concern with this particular library records bill is that in Portsmouth kind of doesn't seem to separate between our public library system. And our school library system because books circulate between all of those different places. And the public library as a matter of practice has always been a confidential place for kids to read whatever they want. Um, so it's not so much about not wanting parents to have that ability. But that again, it's kind of an overreach, like we want to keep libraries, especially our public. but that again, it's kind of an overreach, like we want to keep libraries, especially our public library, that's not where you're going inside the school. A safe place where a kid can go in and read whatever, you know, they need to read. And those records are normally confidential. Well, and not by school choice, but just by the public library's choice. So I hear where you're coming from in terms of that, but that's just the background. And if you want to pull it out of the back, we can absolutely.
For me, I'm gonna still not support our motion on that one, but all the others I will, so if you.
So then you, it sounds like you do want to pull that one out then.
Can I amend to remove HB ninety and two seventy-three and consider them separately?
I mean, anybody can pull something out, so that's.
So I'll second the pulling of pulling of ninety and two seventy-three.
I would also like to recommend uh three twenty-four.
Okay, and do you have questions about that one, Genevieve?
No, I think I understand it. Um I uh I don't know if you're looking for definition of the standards of what they're looking to mandate. Um but I'm just, I'm at a loss of of what the uh, you know, no, I know I wasn't present for all of the conversations. Um but I am looking at the information, I'm wondering why the hesitation was other than, you know, we have rules um to um protect us, we have that, but um uh I don't understand the restriction or what our hesitation is to approve such restrictions.
When we get into the, so this this one, I think part of it gets into the like, like we're we're not, um I think nobody was like, we're pro nudity, sexual contact, you know, whatever, like let's make, you know, but it um but it's the summary includes local school boards will be required to adopt a publicly posted complaint uh resolution policy. Great, that sounds fine. Uh which will facilitate the submission of complaints by parents. Schools must investigate these complaints and respond with specific timelines, right? Uh the provision with provisions for civil actions against non-compliant schools or districts. Uh successful practitioners petitioners may receive damages and legal fees and educators may face disciplinary action for violations. The Attorney General is empowered to enforce these provisions, potentially receiving damages for violations. So I think once we get into the, once we get into the kind of damage language, I think that's, I think that's where people gotta listen.
And it's also got very, very broad language in the bill. If you click through to the link in terms of it's hard to say, you know, could you take an art history class under this bill and look at a sculpture? Or, you know, from the Renaissance, or could you, you know, read many books that are standard parts of our English curriculum in high school that, you know, have some complicated plotlines. Um you know, and certainly nobody is trying to expose kids to things that aren't age appropriate or that are developmentally, you know, like a really bad idea, but at the same time, you know, we want kids to be having a well-rounded education and we don't want there to be like a legal action against, you know, a teacher for, you know, talking about what we're teaching, specific content.
And I think your concern was even that the way once this process is set up, even if a, even if a teacher was to prevail on something that we felt like was not, like, wasn't really justified, the chilling effect that would have on people going in to be like, oh, I might face civil penalties as a result of the fact that I chose a book that someone didn't like, and you might just go through the process of going through a court-like experience connected to the book you gave to a to a kid. And even that doesn't lead to a, doesn't lead to a um to an outcome that that's gonna change the way a lot of people may decide what they, like, I'm not even gonna take a chance. I'm not even gonna do it because I'm not gonna go through that process. I'm not gonna uh be in a position where that's something I'm I'm able to uh to go through for my.
Can you jump in with a point of order here? So we're discussing this, but we the came up about removing this. Uh amendment right now is just HB ninety and two seventy-three.
Yes, so let's vote.
Genevieve, do you want to, do you want us to add three twenty-four?
To the removal list?
To the removal list?
Yeah, so we, is it friendly?
Friendly amendment from us.
It's your amendment, it's your motion.
You're the second.
Okay.
I'll take it.
We'll take it?
Yeah, let's get the other three done.
All right, let's get to that one. All right, I'm with you.
So we've removed now also three twenty-four.
Yeah.
Okay. Pip, you had your hand up.
No, we have to vote on the amendment unless.
Well, Pip's been waiting to say something.
It's a friendly amendment. Do we have to vote?
Yeah, I don't think we have to vote.
You and the secondary would just accept it. Otherwise, it would be an amendment and we could vote on an amendment.
So we're in discussion of the ones that haven't been removed.
I've been trying to say something for a long time.
But we're gonna have more discussions after.
So, because each one's gonna be voted on.
And it applies to everything, so. Let me just say it, so don't forget.
I just wanted to say that I think, as I understand it, the reason that you all have have clumped these policies together is because you're, because they speak to an overreach of policymaking from a state level rather than from a local level.
Correct.
Okay, so nothing, nothing in here, if we didn't, if we didn't approve any of these or we or we even oppose them, doesn't preclude other towns or cities from deciding that they want a policy on something. Right? It just, the, this is sort of, if we vote for them, that would be a broad approval of policy coming from the state, whereas we still can make our own policies on each of these if we want to. Right, and we have policies on a lot of them already. But I just wanted to point out that it doesn't mean that we're keeping other states from, I mean, sorry, not other districts from making their policies the way we want to. So that's why, that's why these are all in here, because, not because not because we oppose the actual action in them, but because we oppose the.
We oppose the state telling us exactly how to do it.
Okay.
Which I say is. Just say these as, the only one I don't see that applying for is HB ninety, because the state does regulate certification of teachers and ability to hire teachers. So you wouldn't then be able to have a local, I agree with you totally, I'm just saying that would have been different.
Okay, thank you. So do we have any other discussion on the bills that were not pulled out of this batch? So we are ready to take a roll call vote on.
To vote on the amendment to remove them, do we?
We do.
No, I think we.
It was a friendly amendment.
Friendly. The original amendment is not that.
Aren't we voting on?
So this is my my memory. So first Pip started with generally introducing a motion to approve all of them, which was seconded.
Yeah.
Then there was an amendment.
So you can take that, you can take those into as a friendly amendment and Byron and I can just.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, wait, what was your, oh, your amendment was to take out.
Yes, the three. Well, you would just take a friendly amendment to take out the first three.
Okay.
Okay, and now we can.
And I might make a suggestion, the rest of them, let's just vote.
With Pip and Carrie.
Okay, I'll take it then.
Okay, okay, so what are we?
The motion on the floor.
So the motion on the floor is.
No.
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 We are voting on.
Opposing bills, five twenty, thirty-three and five oh eight.
There we go.
Sorry.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
All right.
See if I can do this. Uh Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Yes.
Okay, eight to zero on those. So now we go to the, now I'd like to just start with the first one on the list that we pulled out. We'll just discuss HB ninety.
So uh I'll motion to um as written, oppose HB ninety.
The second.
I'll just speak in opposition that I just don't think this is something we need to be involved as with Portsmouth and I envision well-funded districts opposing and poorly funded districts advocating for this, so I would just rather we stay out of it.
I just have a question, which is, is it, am I reading it correctly in that the the person uh has to be employed by University of California College?
It's, the whole thing is very long and murky, but essentially they don't have to be credentialed. And it's unclear if they could be just a lecturer or, I mean, they do, I think technically need to be employed at a commu- a college, but as an example, you could be an adjunct or a lecturer and still not be a certified teacher and be doing something based on your professional experience at a community college and then become teacher in our school, still not having.
But you have to be employed at the university or college at the same time that you're a part.
It is murky.
It's murky.
And vague, and so I'm answering in an equally murky and vague way, but our general concern about it is the watering down of the credential. Um I take your point, Carrie.
Interesting to look at all the opposition.
Yeah, I think um yeah, it's that, I I'm I'm actually more, um I follow Carrie's logic on opposition on but, but hold on. But I think that uh that kind of stipulation doesn't make a ton of sense to me. Um and so on. Uh so that's where I would be in support of the original motion to oppose or as it's written, is because I I think, I don't think it makes any sense.
Any other discussion just on HB ninety? We can do a roll call vote on that.
Motion to oppose HB ninety, Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Start somewhere else.
Okay, Carrie Nolte. Lisa Rappaport. Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead Muskie.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
That was like a.
Well, it is a weird motion, because it's a motion to oppose.
Yeah. The yes for a no.
So you're voting.
All right, so next one we pulled out was HB two seventy-three.
Yeah, motion to oppose HB two seventy-three.
The second.
Second. What this, motion to, in terms of clarifying the yes-no problem. So the friendly amendment, friendly amendment would be the, your motion would be to approve the recommendation of the committee.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the committee to oppose. Question on that.
Yeah.
Okay, so um I I think I'm, I see Brian, where you're coming from in this. What um why I'm, I would vote to oppose the bill um is because of this uh request can only be fulfilled if the address of the parent or guardian matches the address of the minor's library card. Um I think that seems, uh I think there's tons of um scenarios, but that wouldn't be the case and it seems strangely specific and I, yeah. Yeah.
Carrie and then Pip.
So if I I like, I get my kids' library records and they include stuff from the school, so I don't I guess I'm like, what? So if I request, what has my child checked out? I currently get that, so I'm just not sure. Are there times that librarians like are refusing to provide that or like, I guess I just am not sure. Am I not supposed to have access to that or?
I've never requested.
I've never requested it. I know when my kid reserves books, that all I get is a notification that they have a book to pick up. I don't get the notification of what the specific book is. I've never tried to request the records, so I can't speak to that.
Well, I mean, I have connections to my daughter's library, so whenever she reserves something, I'm told the book's available and the title of the book. So I don't believe I that anything is a secret. Um but you seem to believe that that's not the case in Portsmouth is.
I asked the library and they said that there are records that can be kept confidential. I don't know the mechanics of that. I didn't follow up directly with them. I mean, I think generally speaking, at the committee level, our feeling with these kinds of bills is not so much that we want to stop parents from having access to it, but just the concern that it's overly broad and that there can be minutia baked in that can make it very difficult to implement in a clear way. Um you know, I think there have been a lot of bills similar to this over the past several years where sometimes the intention feels a little unclear. You know, there's been a lot of bills that say mandate local school boards create policies for parents to object to course material or to access what books are being taught. We already have those policies. So the challenge becomes how they are spelling out in minute detail exactly how we have to implement it. That kind of upends a lot of the things that we already have in place to give parents access to information. So I think that's more the concern and that we're trying to stop parents from knowing what's going on in the school. It's more that we have to redo a lot of policies that are already working well that we've never had a problem with over the years. Um Pip.
I think, I think it may depend on the student's age too.
That might be true.
Um but I do know that they share, that our public library and our school library share information.
Yeah.
For sure. Um so I guess my feeling on this is that um is that students, regardless of where we are now, I I feel like we're we're in this age of access to digital information everywhere. And I like to think that our libraries are like a trusted source of information for kids. And so personally, I'd much rather have my kid going to a library, whether it's a public library or a school library, and seeking information about something they might not be be ready to talk to me about or be, they might be afraid to share with their families. So um I'd much rather have them do that in the library and maybe even with the guidance of a librarian um than trying to find that information online through their own devices or through their friends. So I I feel very strongly that I that I would want to respect the kids' privacy in this way and not add layers of access for.
And then Brian.
So I was just gonna say that in terms of, on the school, we do have this intersection of the municipal library and the school library. I would say on the school library side, um you know, under federal under the Federal Educational Records and Privacy Act, FERPA, um any records that we create as a school, parents have the right to request. And those records are are kept private from third parties, um with they have identifiable student information. But if you, you know, if you asked for us for records um in the school library, we're incredibly obligated to provide those records if we create them. So if we don't, if we have, now most of the time, you know, any schools, we don't have a list of records, we have to, there's some. But there's some things we create or may not create and it's just a matter of professional choice. Um most schools are gonna have some database, of course, to track where the books went, did they come back? Were we charging fees? Are we doing all that other thing? So in this case, you know, the school records would be things that you're entitled to.
Yeah, so they're already accessible in our.
The school portion is.
But, yeah, and I just, I think, again, in terms of my original comment on this, like, this just feels like another layer of detail that that we don't need. You know, if that, if that's already the case, that that anyone can request information, I fear that we're just gonna keep adding these layers of detail that is, again, again, overreach from the state to our local control.
Brian.
Um just again, I I my knee-jerk reaction is I always think about, I'm thinking about my kids, right? And um yeah, I get, I get it's weird about the address thing, but the spirit of it, I agree with, just because I would want to be able to um I look, I have teenagers, I track what they do online, you know what I mean? I know what they're doing and I and I do it because, not to be um violate their privacy, but it's for me to be, feel like I can be there as a good parent and I may not address things directly, but I just feel like this is one of those cases where I just, you know, and again, you guys can disagree with me and it's fine and that's what we do and uh but I just, I can't support uh support this. I just, you know, when it comes to knowing about my kids, so that's it.
I'm sorry, do you have a question or?
Yeah, well, just a, it's it, so it says right there, it says which states that all libraries, it does specify all libraries. So does that pull the public library into this?
That was our concern.
Yeah, I'm just curious, and you know, I just, my assumption is it's all encompassing. Um that it's not just schoolized because it says all libraries, it's school and public.
Right, and I think that, yeah.
Because you're still dealing with minors.
Right, right, so so um so yeah, no, I think this does definitely, it's a bigger, it's a bigger umbrella than what people are already entitled to, which would be the program.
I'm probably more team Pip on this one. I like to think that my kids can go to the library and learn whatever they want to learn. And that's, for, at least for our family, more of a priority than me being able to get the list of every single book they check out. But I totally hear where you're coming from on that. I feel like we can put it to a vote and that's why we have a super majority vote, so.
Vote on it.
Motion is to approve the recommendation of the committee to oppose HB two seventy-three. Ah, Brian French.
No.
Lee Hudson.
Oppose, yes.
Posia.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte.
No.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Nancy Clayberg.
No.
Genevieve Beckstead-Musky.
No.
We do not have.
No, okay. Um, so moving on to three twenty-four. Um, which is a similar type of topic, but not quite. Um, do we have a motion to follow the committee's recommendation to oppose HB three twenty-four?
Motion to follow the committee's recommendation to oppose HB three twenty-four.
Second. Discussion.
I, 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 I'm, I'm voting that we oppose this because of what you said about, you know, the sculpture in art class or the Shakespeare story that talks about is something that we might think is off-color. You know, I think it's just too restrictive to, um, uh, to, to, to those kinds of, um, subjects we might want our kids to have.
Just think from the, from another perspective, health-related education and understanding the human body and, um, especially puberty and adolescence and thing, all of that is really important. And so I would hate for health material to be, people to be fearful of, um, that.
Poor Haven coming into the school and educating kids on consent and. I see Brian, Genevieve, Zach.
Yeah, just, I think it's too subjective and honestly, it's just like, you know, freedom of speech and allow us, if we're gonna restrict something or case-by-case basis, but I think, um, this is just overreaching again.
Genevieve.
Um, mine was more on the sex education, um, that our middle school is not teaching that, just so you all know. Um, I have a middle schooler who's yet to have it and she's in eighth grade. So, um, that's something that seems to have fallen off the curriculum. I, I'll just end there.
Zach, you had something to add?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think part of this is, is process stuff. So there, so, so the school board has policies, uh, where there's, there's a IGE, which is parental objections to specific course material. There's a process where people can come to the elected representatives of the community who are overseeing the school board, the schools, and make a case about their concerns about that. If it's health-related stuff, parents can opt their kids out of, um, out of health, uh, things. So I, I look at it as this basically creates another avenue that bypasses the democratically-elected people of the community who are gonna oversee what is or is not appropriate. Um, those people are bypassed and a new lane is created where, um, tho- that election doesn't matter. Uh, and, um, and folks can, and take, and basically take the, take the, um, the district to, uh, civil action and potentially go after individual staff members. So I think there is an avenue for these types of issues to be addressed through the democratically-elected people of, um, Portsmouth.
Another discussion?
Let's vote.
Vote.
Hey, voting on the motion to follow the committee recommendation to oppose HB three twenty-four. Byron Mado.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte.
Yes.
Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead-Musky.
No.
Seven to one. Super majority passed.
So those were the easy ones.
Oh boy.
And the last few that we pulled out, so right, I'm gonna say. Oops.
Why is it working though? I have six and seven.
Cell phone.
Should I worry about cell phones?
We have the cell phones, yeah. So I wanted to offer a little bit of background. Cell phone bills in particular because we already have cellphone policies at the high school level, which is essentially an often a way until I say that's, you know, it's been something that's been evolving, I would say, it's fair to say, over the last few years. And there's been some input from teachers, there's been some input from students, there's been some input from administrators, and it's definitely been a work in progress, I think it's fair to say. And our concern with an overly broad mandate from the state on specifics of a policy on cell phones would be that it could get in the way of us being able to do what we feel has been working well within our buildings. And so the interesting thing on the cellphone bills right now is that one is much more prescriptive in terms of very specific mechanics that we need to follow. And that is the Senate version of the cellphone bill SB two oh six. And so our reason for opposition to that is not because we want to have kids on their phones all day. It is because there are some very, very detailed level, um, specifics in that version of the bill in terms of exactly what our policy needs to say that would be very much different from the exact details that we've put in our own policy and potentially out of step with some of the things that seem to be working fairly well. At least, you know, from what we've been hearing from our administrators and teachers at the high school. Um, and then similarly, our support as a committee for the House version of the bill HB one thirty-one is that it essentially says districts need to have a cellphone policy that restricts their use during classroom time, but it doesn't tell us exactly how we do it and would give us the flexibility. I mean, I know we have teachers in the high school that sometimes use the phones as part of instruction. And that House bill would enable us to decide for our schools, what do we think is the best way to thread that needle? We don't want them staring at the screens all day, um, but we don't necessarily want to have an exhaustive laundry list of exact ways that we need to take the cell phones away. So that's the reason for the different position on the two bills. Um, is there a motion, I'm sorry, I sort of started there, but is there a motion to follow the committee's recommendation on the two cellphone bills?
Motion to follow the committee's recommendations on the two cellphone bills.
Second.
Second.
Okay, now a discussion, I'm sorry for that, uh, wind up, I'm getting a little tired.
Um, I will say, speaking, um, from a poly, policies perspective, um, I'm happy to see some recommendations coming known. Um, because I do think this is an area where schools need to address it, but not to, not with great specifics. So I really appreciate the recommendations that you guys have made. Um, and I think I also appreciate in one thirty-one, the, um, the exceptions that are, are specified around, um, IEPs or, uh, using them, the devices as part of the educational, um, coursework or as tools in the classroom. So I think it's, I think that one does a nice job of summarizing what we need as guidance, but then allowing us as a, as a, um, local district to make our own more specific policies if we need to.
The other.
Can I ask Erica a question? Do you feel that the policy works well at the high school terms of the policy? Am I putting you on?
I mean, uh, for being a teacher who's used cell phones in my rooms, like, we just used it today to download an app for a project we were doing. Um, I think it does work well because you're, you're setting limits for the kids of when it's appropriate to you and when it's not appropriate to you. Um, and I think that message has got, gotten out with high school this year specifically. And there, and teacher, and kids that go naturally to teachers who know that it's often a way that you don't use it in class and then they know there are certain classes they go to that they use it for a tool in the classroom. And I think they get that. I think it has worked well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The other, vote, okay, Carrie saying vote. All right, let's do it.
Motion to follow the committee recommendation on cellphone bills.
Oppose, correct.
Not right.
Okay, okay.
Carrie, Nolte, yes. Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Byron Mado.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
You're on mute.
He's working on it. Everybody.
Lee Hudson.
Have more conversation.
Brian French.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Nancy Clayberg.
Yes.
And Genevieve Beckstead-Musky.
Yes.
Oh, we're gonna just.
That's all right, we got enough.
We've got, yeah, seven to zero.
All right, so, and is inside. Um, so the next motion is for the House and Senate version of, um, what is called the Parents' Bill of Rights and sort of similar to some of the other ones that we've discussed. Um, the concerns at the committee level with these bills is that we have broad procedures in many ways to help parents have access to what's being taught and what their kids are doing in school every day. And these bills have buried within them a lot of potential for going after teachers' credentials and legal penalties and involving the court system in ways that are not how we would want to resolve parent concerns about curriculum or other things that are going on in the schools. And in addition, this board has, for the past several years, opposed these bills because they have within them language that is specifically designed to out LGBTQ plus students to their parents and they're not out at home. And that has generally been something that we have not wanted as a board to support because we want our schools to be a safe space for all of our kids. So that's the background on these. I guess we can start with, do we have a motion to follow the board's recommendation on these?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All righty, and then more discussion.
I'll be, uh, I'll be supporting the committee's recommendation to oppose these bills.
As will I. Nancy.
I, I'm supporting it, but what disturbs me about it is it says minor children. What if you have a first grader and doesn't a parent have a right to know what their first grader is doing? I mean, I wish you'd have defined that better, well, or kindergarten or third grade or.
But I guess it depends on what you want to know because if it's what are they doing in class, or, I mean, honestly, at the elementary level, even if they're having challenges on the playground or at lunch with the kid they're sitting with. I mean, the teachers are in constant contact with families about all sorts of, I mean, at that age, the social piece is a huge part of what they're teaching. And so they're talking to parents, gosh, I can't remember, you know, communications we got in those early years about all the things going on in the building. So I think the issue with these isn't so much with parents finding out what's going on. It's not a secret. You know, you should know what your kid is doing in kindergarten. The issue is that it sets up this whole sort of quasi-judicial process around it that if you believe that something is being hidden from you or if you believe that, you know, you didn't get a thorough enough answer to something, instead of maybe taking the step of I go to the teacher and then I go to the principal and then I can go to the superintendent. Instead, you're going to a more legal route directly. And that's not ultimately a great way for teachers to feel comfortable intervening when your two kids are having a dispute at recess. You know, I mean, it's just, you don't want that to become something that is a punitive process for our educators when really the intention is just for you to be able to shoot out an email to a teacher or pick up the phone and call the school. And if you don't feel that they're responding to you, you have a mechanism in the district to pursue that further. You know, you go to the principal, you go to Zach, you know, there's many layers of places you can go. So it's not to stop you from getting the information, it's more that, I mean, I think historically when we have opposed these types of bills in previous years, it's because of the fact that they're taking it kind of out of the normal procedures and policies that we have in place and setting up this whole other layer of we can go after the teacher's license, we can have a civil proceeding, we can, you know, and it's, I don't know. That's the main gist of it. But Brian, I see your hand, Carrie, Genevieve.
Yeah, I, I remember those provisions and previous ones, but that's not in this one that I can see about them doing civil.
It is.
It is.
It is?
Yeah. In, in SB seventy-two, it says the bill also includes provisions for cellular remedies.
I'm talking about HB ten.
Hang on.
Because I did see that in HB seventy-two or SB seventy-two, but not HB ten. Because that's why I, I.
That's fair.
Didn't push on it before.
Um, so the current version of the Senate.
Yeah, doesn't, the amended version doesn't.
Okay, um, hang on, I'm just looking. So the Senate bill still has civil and criminal remedies in the Senate bill, so that's SB seventy-two.
And I wouldn't support that one because of that.
And is that, is it out of the House bill now? I apologize, hang on, I'm just pulling up the text.
In the House bill, I don't see it. And again, I.
No, you may be right, these.
Yeah, and for me, it's just my knee-jerk reaction is to allow parents to have the information.
That's, that's fair. Um, I'm just pulling up, you already got it, I'm already.
But I don't want to create a situation for teachers and stuff.
Yeah, the summary of the bill in the tracker doesn't say a criminal or civil.
I'm reading, I'm reading the whole bill here and I haven't seen it.
It might have come out, hang on. I'll look that up, Ryan, and I think there are other hands. I've been Carrie and I saw Genevieve.
Yeah, I, I think, I have more, and she's just on the, like, healthcare provider side of things. Like, I'm not sure why those things are integrated, um, so much. Um, because as far as I'm aware, like, the, the, these are primarily modifying educational bills. And so there's a whole nother set of, like, healthcare-related consent-in-a-scent stuff.
I would say broadly that some of this is boilerplate language that has been bounced from state house to state house around the country. And sometimes you do find a mismatch between what you might think is pertinent. Um, so I think that that's why that's in there. Um, and I'm just looking for the.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I don't support it regardless, I think, but I think, like, some of this just feels like, um, you know, like, the storage of DNA material is not something that is being done in our schools. Um, it's very expensive in fact. Um, and so, you know, I think just.
It says that in one of them?
Yeah.
Which one is that?
That's ten, HB ten.
Really?
Um.
It's a very odd one.
Yeah, I mean, like, there's all sorts of other laws and regulations that are already related to this. So I just don't see, like, the founding of it being in a parental bill of rights.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer to vote on them separately because, just because I'm gonna vote differently.
Okay, no, that's fair.
On each one, but.
Oh, let's withdraw the vote then.
Friendly amendment.
I mean, it's.
Yeah.
We just go to one, I think we just do a new, a new motion.
Motion.
It was, who was the motion?
I think you made it.
No, it was Pip.
Pip and Byron.
And then Byron.
Withdrawn.
Done, okay. Withdraw, are you okay with withdrawing your motion? Get them separately.
Or amending the motion to just do one at a time?
It's expectedly the same, yeah.
So then we're just.
It sounds like, I heard.
Ten.
Well, it's Pip's motion.
I would prefer to amend the emotion, the emotion, the motion to, um, to just support the committee's recommendation on, uh, SB seventy-two.
Okay. I'm good with that. Good to vote?
Are we? Okay.
Nancy Clayberg.
I was just gonna say, don't start with me.
You guys. Okay, Brian French.
No.
Lee Hudson. Lee Hudson. Byron Mado.
Which one are we on, I'm sorry? No, so, okay, that's what I thought. No, we're on seventy-two.
No, that's not what I meant.
Brian?
Seventy-two, I, yes.
You're a yes.
Thank you.
Lee Hudson.
I just was going in order.
Bill, yes.
Bill, yes. Byron Mado. Carrie Nolte. Lisa Rappaport. Genevieve Beckstead Muskie. Nancy Clayberg. Pip Clues. Seven to one.
That motion to approve the position of the committee to oppose HB ten.
Ryan, as a matter of fact, I did check the last version. It was amended on the House floor and it took out the criminal language when it was amended on the House floor. So you are correct about that. When I wrote this up, it was different.
It can change still.
Yes, it can. Do we have any further discussion or do we want to vote on this?
HB ten.
I mean, HB ten. On the tail end, there was a provision.
On data?
And it was about not allowing the school to collect any data other than what is required by law. Where is it here? I'm trying to find the provision.
Oh, not allowing?
The rights nine, line ten of.
What page you have?
I'm on page five. So the right of a parent to opt out to any district level data collection relating to his or her minor child not required by federal state law, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, and I'm trying to figure out how I implement that. So if someone comes and says, I, I don't want you to collect any data connected to my kid except for the data that's laid out in state or federal law. We collect data all the time about all kinds of things, um, that are not directly connected to a state or federal law, you know? Erica collect data on how many kids came in. Well, it's attendance, we would do attendance based on state law. But, you know, there'd be a variety of different things that we, we, we would collect data to make informed decisions about.
How many kids are voting for this project versus that project so that I can order supply? I mean, yeah, there's.
Well, there's district level data. I'm just really curious. Uh, it's an interesting provision and I'm.
I think what.
I'm trying to figure out how I, how I would carry it out.
I want, I want to sort of build on what you're saying because I, I think that what, what I'm objecting to in this bill is, um, is this very general sense that parents should have involvement, like it says to promote parental involvement in education. So I, I'm all for pro- promoting parental involvement, but it seems like we're, we're, we're just like, it seems like there's this dissolution of trust that our schools are doing the right thing. And I think that's sort of what you're speaking to, too, like, how can, how is it even logistically possible for you to say, okay, for this kid, I can't keep this bit of data, but for this kid, I can't, I have to keep this and not that. It's just, it's like, it just feels like an overreach in terms of what we're trusting our schools to do and with the information they have and for the kids that, that they know how to educate, you know? Like, parents aren't always the best people to do that. I think we, we have, if you're gonna send your kid to public school, you're gonna have to accept that, that they're being taken care of by other adults and there are systems that we use to do that. So I think it's, I think the language is too broad. But I think overall, it's also, at the same time, it's an overreach into what we should be trusting our schools to do. I mean, the only other thing I would say about it is there's a lot of rights in here that we already have, that we know we have. Like, you have a right to get a report card, you have a right to know, you know, where, you, you know, what classes your kid is taking. There's all sorts of things like that in there. And then there's also things in here that aren't even pertinent to New Hampshire that they've still left in the law. Like, for example, the right to enroll in gifted programs. We don't recognize gifted and talented in the state of New Hampshire as a Department of Education, and that's still in the law. So, I mean, it's just, there's a lot of stuff in here that's sort of cut and paste from other states. And there are some states where some pieces of this, if you don't spell it out in law, you might not have access to it. But that's not the case in New Hampshire, and it's not the case in our district, so. I don't know. Is there another? Carrie and Byron, or?
Similar to before, but it's just like the, and I guess the cookie cutter language from other places. But it's like, schools are not making healthcare decisions related to end of life treatments with. Um, and so it's like, I mean, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, it's the same thing. It's just like so, um, fear mongering, um, around like restoring your DNA and putting trackers in your kids and like, it's just happening.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, my sense is just the broadness of it, um, is so diffuse that its effectiveness is, I think, um, the, the effectiveness relative to its intent, to your point, Pip, about sort of encouraging parent involvement, I think is diminished. I think if there's specific, um, moments of parent rights relative to specific information, and we do have policies on those things, and that's the point you've made multiple times, Pips. And, uh, if there's, you know, state statute that can be amended on specifics, I think that's more the direction that should happen. I think this is broad and like sloppy in terms of like the copy and paste language, I, that's, um, yeah.
I think we had a hand up on Zoom.
Yeah, I think my objection to it is that our schools are intended to, to promote creative thinking. And e- even if that is against, for example, a parent's view, so, you know, if a parent has a view that, that evolution is not, you know, from a religious standpoint, something that they you know, abide to, then not teaching someone evolution just seems ridiculous to me, you know? And just as a simple example, right? I mean, w- we should not be controlling how our schools actually provide the opportunity for creative thinking.
Brian's your hand up, are you?
I mean, um, you know, in general, my knee jerk reaction is always support, support parents' right to know. Um, but I think you guys convinced me that this is reading through it, it just makes no sense. All the stuff doesn't make sense, there's too much stuff in there. But I, I support the spirit of it, you know, because I think parents should be able to know. Um, but I'm not gonna support it either.
Their discussion?
Motion to approve the recommendation of the committee to oppose HB ten.
Patty, you can start with me.
Nancy Clayberg. Pip Clues. Brian French. Lee Hudson. Byron Mado. Carrie Nolte. Lisa Rappaport. Genevieve Beckstead Muskie. Seven to one.
Home stretch. Alright, so the last motion in the packet is related to a House bill and a Senate bill that are both focused on defining biological sex for a wide variety of procedures and policies in the schools. And, um, there may be some situations when that is completely appropriate, but there are also some situations where that gets us into, um, potentially being in opposition to our practices within our schools to be inclusive and supportive of all of our students, including LGBTQ plus students. And beyond this, also vague, broad, and rapidly evolving landscape legally makes it challenging to follow these types of um, mandates from the state and the current climate. So for all of those reasons, the committee felt like these were out of step with what our current policies are and our current values are in Portsmouth. So, that's the background there. I will start with a motion to. They are, we can't break them out, these are fairly identical in scope.
To approve the recommendation of the committee on HB one forty-eight and SB thirty-eight.
Did you want to break them out? Okay, sorry.
It was just getting confusing before of like.
No, I totally get it.
Starting and then separating, I was there, let's just start with.
Discussion. See, Nancy, Pip, is that your hand?
Sure, I'll talk.
Okay, Nancy.
As you all know, I'm opposed to this, uh, because of the athletic competitions. So I will not support the recommendation of committee. One forty-eight and SB thirty-eight.
I wanted to, I, I was gonna share this in the, um, committee updates, but I'll, I'll take the opportunity to say it now. We had a, um, policy committee last week, um, co- policy committee meeting where we invited several people from our schools and, uh, and we had some people from the community show up as well. And, um, there was a lot of discussion, it was around our gender policies. And there were, was, um, a lot of sort of testimony from a ver- wide variety of people from the community and from our district. But the primary message that I heard from them over and over was this is a time where we as a community and a district need to support our students, particularly in the LGBT community, because they are feeling, um, they're feeling attacked and very unsafe in our political climate right now in the, in the country. Um, and so I, I want us as a district to stand behind those kids and, um, and, and oppose these bills. Other discussion?
I just feel like this is something that, um, that we can work with here. I don't, I don't like the idea of, again, I feel like it's overreaching some uh, in the language and, and what it's, what it's trying to treat here, so. Feel like we can handle this stuff here. How we deal with bathrooms and all that stuff, I mean, it seems it's very, too much dis- prescription about what's going on for us.
There are other, Genevieve?
So other than the financial supports that we were discussing earlier, as far as federal funding, I have a daughter to where I can respect others' privacies. I have to respect my daughter's privacy too, her right to privacy. I've been to Durham, uh, Oyster River. Oyster River has single stall bathrooms throughout that school. Single stall bathrooms where one person goes in with a toilet in the sink and one person comes out. And they don't have that issue there because it's a single stall restroom. But when you have sext bathrooms, boys and girls, both of them are entitled to their privacies. And sports, I, I, I concur, uh, Nancy, with that too. I would hate to see something get removed or taken away from a young lady or a gentleman, um, who has worked hard for what their accomplishments are because of someone else. Um, so I will not support either of these um, in your opposition.
Um, just with, um, very beloved, um, trans family members who've seen amazing, um, changes as they, um, transitioned to their, um, the appropriate gender for them, I think that what we, you know, uh, they, they both at this point are very much, um, so, I'm so tired today, I'm so sorry, um, I'm not being compelling at all, but the, they, they both very much pass um, as their, their gender. And so it would be very, very strange. And it would actually probably go back to that nudity or obscene material thing if we, um, were really pushing to um, look at genitals in order to figure out which bathroom people should use. And I think this isn't a problem now. I think that in our institutions, we've all worked this, worked through this um, in somewhat different ways, but ways that are uniquely, um, to support our kids, because that's what everyone does. So I support our opposition of these as a board. I think it's really important for our kids.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I, I agree with you, Carrie, and I think that, um, the point you made around, um, uh, you know, folks who are, um, folks who are passing essentially being in a situation where, um, you know, they're being forced to, uh, use facilities that are, uh, not of the preferred gender, I think is, um, assault on their person, um, and, and it's detrimental to them and is harming them. Um, I think the, um, the concern about, um, athletic competition, um, I, I hear what you're saying, Nancy. I think we can be in opposition of these bills, and I think that can be addressed separately. Um, so I don't see, uh, that specific issue as being, uh, a reason why we would need to be in support of these measures. So I think that's why I'm, I'm in support of the recommendation.
Wanted to just say one other thing about sports. We do have a policy here, which is we follow the New Hampshire, um, NHIAA. So that already addresses your concerns about sports. They actually recently emerged a better approach, so we follow their rules. And that's what our current policy is and what it has been for quite some time.
Can you just review what?
So who's gonna, you're gonna correct me on that because you just got the new rules. They actually used to allow trans athletes to play, and I believe that they just changed their policy to no longer do that by understood. And there is court cases that are working their way through the court in New Hampshire around this that may or may not change what their policy is ultimately, but our policy has been to follow them.
Yeah, so it was, yeah. What was just in the NHIAA bylaw, Article two, section twenty-one, there wa- there was, um, uh, language supporting transgender participation in athletics, and that, um, section has been suspended, so that is no longer in the NHIAA, um, rules. And so as we follow those, that is no longer, um, our position as well.
So, I would say, so seven. Back to the, so, uh, in terms of, this is part of the package of this bill. I think overall, what the bill is saying is that now, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to think about what we were doing, beginning the process of respecting people's gender identity around this u- use of facilities. As like the first, kind of the first, anything point, that's like a fifteen, twenty years.
Twenty fourteen.
Yeah, that we've been, that that's been the case. And then these bills would both say it is now lawful to discriminate against people who, um, feel that their gender identity is is distinct from their, from their sex at birth. So I think it turns back fifteen years worth of accepted practice. I think, if you, I think one of our best kind of, um, speakers to this is sick tonight. And Nathan's, uh, here and, and talk about it from a student's perspective, I think, uh, what drives home the fact that for, for vast majority of our student body, this is a non-issue.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, uh, this particular bill and, and what it says, uh, is that it actually does allow for discrimination, uh, for the classification of individuals based on biological sex in specific contexts. Lavatories, locker rooms, athletic competitions, and detention facilities. So it actually flies in the face of what you just read, Brian. Um, and I actually, or Byron and I actually agree with, with Brian that we ought to just address this at local level.
Can I just ask for a quick clarification? So the NHIAA is saying transgender athletes do not play on the girls' team. The provision that allowed it.
They're splitting the difference. They're splitting the difference a little bit. Uh, I think they're playing the cons- uh, well, I mean, they lit- they had a clause that specifically allowed it to occur. They suspended the clause. So uh, so now it's, and um they've pointed to you know, they've pointed to executive orders connected to.
Yeah, and I just think that, you know, if there needs to be more discussion about the athletics conversation, that can happen, you know, at a local level. And I don't think it, I don't think support of these um these motions or these uh.
Support of the recommendation to oppose.
Yeah.
Does not necessarily mean a full-blown endorsement of transgender athletes in every situation. I think.
Yeah, it is actually on our policy agenda to to be discussing that particular policy. So it will be coming up on the local level anyway.
Yeah.
In that case, I will vote to oppose this as the recommendation of the legislative committee.
Was there another hand? Sorry.
Well, I'm I'm, my question is, um, what are our policies on the use of the restrooms and the locker rooms?
Gender identity. So based on your your gender identity, you have access to those spaces. So.
How you identify.
Yes.
Yes.
Yourself.
Yes.
So how you choose to identify yourself.
Yes.
You can use whatever you feel is appropriate.
Yes. And and what we don't see is, I think in that, I mean, that could often lead to this um uh in some circles, you say, oh, people just come in, they're like, well, today I'm a boy and I'm going into the boys' room. Tomorrow I'm a girl, I'm going in the girls' room. We don't see that stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, for most kids, this is, there's, I mean, there's all kinds of social stakes connected with them putting themselves out there. Um, and so, you know, I haven't in this district seen that happen. I haven't seen that in other districts where kids take this as a flippant opportunity to go to, you know, voyeur into another space. Um, and but yes, our policy, to answer your original question, uh, our policy is um to uh is connected to you uh identifying your specific gender identity and then accessing those facilities.
So as a mother of a fourteen-year-old female, young lady, I can tell you that um this is a conversation that these young girls do have. Um, and I do not feel that their approval is what you seem to think that it is. Um, because where I appreciate the rights of others, I don't appreciate um these young ladies having their privacy interrupted like that. So I I where I, you might have the pulse of some of the community uh of the school students, um but it's not all.
Sure.
Um, and because it's a social topic, it's becoming more and more socially acceptable. Um, it's almost detrimental to speak up in opposition. So as detrimental it is for me to speak up um in opposition to what the majority feels, I strongly feel that I know every single friend of my daughters would oppose to this. And those are the voices of the people that I am deciding for and speaking up for and supporting. Because those voices are not being heard because it's unpopular.
Um, I appreciate that you're speaking to, uh, expressing an unpopular position. Um, I think that's really important. And I I I have a fifteen-year-old daughter. Um, and uh this is not an issue for her. Um, but um I think, I think the issue that you speak of relies on the presumption that being around other girls of the same sex is more private or not. I think, uh, you know, I think there's a lot of presumption built in that those girls are identifying as girls or identifying as the non-binary. That that's something that we as adults who are not in the schools with the kids may not entirely understand. Um, but I wanted to say beyond what what I wanted to speak to actually was um that that what some of us have voiced here is not necessarily an opinion, but it's also based on mental health statistics for the students that can't access a restroom that are that are when forced to access a restroom that doesn't match with their gender identity, there are significant mental health implications. And so it's um, it's a bit dat- it's a bit more data-driven than just us having opinions.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just um we can have a difference of opinion without trying to in a a nice way shame me for having a difference of opinion.
Oh, I'm not, I'm absolutely not shaming you. I just wanted to point out, it's not just opinion, that's all. There is some data behind it. And maybe there's, maybe there's that I don't know of on the other side where where girls are worried about using.
It's okay for us to differ.
Totally agree.
So I just want to put one other thing out here. I mean, at least from my perspective, this is not really just about bathrooms. I understand that everybody gets very emotional when they think about that piece of it. But I'm gonna speak from the other perspective as somebody with trans kids in our schools. They don't feel safe every day. You know, and especially my middle school kid comes home a lot feeling unsafe, feeling picked on, feeling like we don't create an environment where they're welcome. And I think when we support, you know, legislation that will allow discriminating against them specifically, because that really is what the law says will be allowed, we're just giving them one more reason to think that our schools are not safe. So I totally understand where you're coming from in terms of being concerned for your daughter, but I just wanna voice that at least from my perspective, this isn't just a bathroom question. This is a question of, do we have a community where everybody is welcome in all of the ways that we wanna define that? And I can understand how there's some pieces of this that may bring up big emotions for people or feel more or less controversial. But at least from my perspective, um, it's not just about bathrooms or sports. It's about, is this a building that my kid can walk into every day and feel welcome? So I'm just gonna voice that on this one, but I also could go all night around on this one, but.
Yeah, I wanted to point point out that we're not talking about our own policies here anyway.
I know.
So but but that said, there is a policy, the policy committee is currently discussing gender identity-related um policies. And uh we just, as I mentioned, we just had a uh sort of public hearing on that public forum. Um, and we will be meeting with private counsel and then bringing this question back to the board again. So we will have the opportunity to discuss it at a board level locally.
Exactly, very soon. So should we say maybe we can vote?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Motion to approve the recommendation of the committee on HB one forty-eight and SB thirty-eight. Byron Mato.
Yes.
Carrie Nolte. Lisa Rappaport.
Yes.
Lee Hudson.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead-Musky.
No.
Nancy Claiberg.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Brian French.
Yes.
Seven to one.
We did it.
That's the end of the list, so we're good.
Good.
Okay, Lisa again, thank you.
Thank you for talking.
Worked really, really hard on this and the meeting was well-prepared to tell us numbers what was going on, so. Thank you. And we'll watch it all very closely and you'll keep us updated, right?
One thing will be the budget this year.
Yeah.
Because you never know what really is surprising and interesting things will crop up in June.
Okay, we will move on to committee updates. Pip, did you want to say more about the policy committee more?
Um, I will, I will just say that um we did record this meeting and we had invited the whole board. I know a lot of people couldn't make it, but um I would really encourage everybody to try to watch the meeting if possible, because as I said, we will be meeting, the next step is that we're meeting with counsel in a private session with the policy committee. And then we'll come back to you again with recommendations. Um, so I just encourage you to watch that meeting if you get a chance, because um there was some great public input and input from people in our district that I think would be helpful when it comes to, when the vote comes around.
And I don't, just to uh be clear on that too, I was just looking to see that's up yet. So we did, because we've gone, we've only recently gone into the posting, the recording and then posting of of um committee stuff.
Yeah.
So we just were having a conversation, just to be transparent, with um with the city producers about we recorded it, now we'd like you to put it up on YouTube. So the legislative stuff, I know, because I was just dealing with this today. So the legislative ones are up.
It was up, I think I actually.
Policy went up?
I can, why don't I just send?
It is a. Is it up?
Send the link.
All right, I just didn't know if it was up. I hadn't seen it for sure. I just want to make sure we didn't plug something and then it didn't appear. So.
Yeah, I'll actually send everybody the link so you can.
One was the meeting.
I had a question.
Six, seven.
I'm sorry.
Lisa has a question.
Sorry, I did.
I didn't under the date of the meeting to reference. Thank you.
No, I just had a question about the meeting with counsel, because I feel like these policies have kind of cycled back from the policy committee to the board to kind of meeting with counsel, back to the policy committee. Um, would it be possible to have the meeting with counsel be open to the board? Because I do feel like there's a lot that could potentially get like you're not in a position at the board meeting to share what is said in a private conversation with counsel, because that's the nature of the meeting. It's privileged. So even if you want to get into more details about that in this venue, you wouldn't necessarily be in a position to do so. So I would love it if the committee would consider making that open to the board, even if it's a private session or whatever. Just so we can be on the same page, because we can't ask all those legal questions.
No, and also we didn't, we didn't know last time that it was happening, so the board probably didn't come prepared with questions.
So.
Um, I think that makes sense. And then maybe we could have a separate policy committee meeting after that. Uh, so maybe we won't have to, but we'll, we'll have to come up with recommendations. But I agree with you that it would be nice to have everybody privy to that information.
Rather. I would just say not as, I would be comfortable with it being a separate, like have policy do their thing. And then when that's coming to the board, let's have a non-public
and non.
fire to that. I don't think the development of the policy needs to.
Well, it's the meeting with counsel that she's referring to.
So.
Right, but.
Sorry.
I mean, I guess, I guess just as it would happen otherwise, I feel like trying to schedule something related is just not gonna work for board members, but having the opportunity once that policy revision comes to the board.
I see. So to have a second meeting with counsel, is that what you're saying?
Kind of, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, so we, so I think that, because we originally were gonna, there are a couple of different places going. So one of the dialogues that we had was, at one point, we had talked about bringing in counsel with the policy committee in an open session. But I would say in in all of our, all of our attorneys we work with are open to doing something in public session. If the conversation we got into was not specifically for this, but just in general, that when you bring in an attorney, that you have the ability as a board, as any type of public body, to have an a, an attorney-client privilege with that particular attorney. So you can sit in closed session and say, well, hey, if I wanted to do blank, how much trouble would I get in? And as a board, or if I want to do this, what's the probability that I might end up in a court case? Um, on any issue, not just this, on anything. And when you, as long as you maintain the confidentiality confidentiality of that conversation, then you retain privilege. So the information that happens in that session remains in that session. As soon as you pull that out of the, that some sort of dialogue and you're in, you're either in a public conversation with your attorney or you are um, or you walk out of what was supposed to be a confidential conversation with the attorney and you put up a blast about it on Facebook, or you start talking to everybody about it. You have now given up the privilege because you have now made it public. Um, the reason why that can be important is attorneys are gonna give you recommendations about the level of risk connected to the choices you may, you may make. That advice about that level of risk, you may go with or against. But it could, if you make that advice public, it can be used against you potentially in any number of situations. Um, ba- basically, you want to maintain the privilege when you have the ability to maintain the privilege. So the thought process around this at one point was do the conversation that we were gonna do the other day, after we originally advertised as maybe we were gonna have a public attorney conversation. Um, let's instead listen to the folks who had come in to talk. Have the policy committee meet with counsel around, okay, we heard these things, here's what we're trying to figure out as we're trying to craft a recommendation to the board. What can you tell us about these different thoughts we have? Advise us about what, what laws we need to think about. Craft a prototype, basically, um, that was based on that conversation uh connected with the policy committee and then bring that prototype to the board. Uh, and um, which will incorporate some elements of what the attorney had to say probably and not some other elements, depending on what we're, what we're trying to do. So that was the basic thought process. But if you, so what I would be interested in, just in terms of in general, is do we want to get into a situation, maybe we do, where anytime a a a committee got to the level of talking to an attorney, then the whole board should be able to know. And maybe we do. Maybe that's what we wanna, maybe that's what we wanna do. If it rises to that level of we're looking for legal advice, maybe that's always a open to the full board type of thing. Um, anyways, just some random thoughts. Dump, rain dump.
I would love to be a a part of that. I I just think it needs to be aligned with the board meeting. I think not having like.
Oh, were you just saying scheduling-wise?
We could schedule it as a non-meeting with counsel before a board.
Before a board meeting.
Like, that's what I'm saying, yes.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't understand that. Yes, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
So you're saying we shouldn't add another meeting for everyone to come?
I, yeah, you can't do like noon on a Thursday, right?
I think that is totally doable.
If the, if the idea is, because there's a difference between it being a board consultation and then a meeting where board members are welcome or also invited.
And the last one, by the way, was scheduled far in advance, which is why we just invited people, but that was, I felt bad because it was a hard time for people to get to. Um, but I think, I mean, I I think I generally agree with your concept that if any po- any committee goes to seek counsel, that maybe the board should be there, because to Lisa's point, we as a policy committee can't really explain the full legal picture in a public meeting.
Right.
To make our case or to, you know, help people under contend it better. So I guess it may make sense to have everybody.
The only thing I worry about as a policy side, we always did that, is then every time we get it, not every time, if we have occasion where we're on, you know, we hit policies where then we're trying to wordsmith a policy as a group of eight or group of nine, no, ten, eleven of us or whatever it is, are trying to wordsmith a policy with an attorney, usually in like a one-hour session type thing. And I wonder if there's value in a smaller group saying, I think this is what we're trying to do, talking with attorney, having a group of four or five people try to wordsmith and then come back and talk to the board again with an attorney, now with the prototype.
That's the best way, yeah.
So we've already kind of done some, so we've done some work to kind of choose around a certain idea with legal advice. And now the whole board gets to look at the prototype and get advice and ask questions about, well, I have this question about this legally, we could not, though anyways, good, so.
To extend to ten oh five.
Have we, I thought we had a short agenda.
Second.
I can't believe we're.
Gotta suspend the rules.
Gotta suspend the rules.
Suspend, motion to suspend the rules to extend the meeting until ten oh five.
Second.
All in favor?
Lee, you too.
Voice vote or a.
I got a dual call. Lisa Rappaport. Carrie Nolte. Byron Mato.
No.
No. Lee Hudson.
No.
Brian French.
Yes.
Pip Clues.
Yes.
Nancy Claiberg.
Yes.
Genevieve Beckstead-Musky.
Yeah.
Uh.
Six or five?
So one, one, I got two outs, so six out of, yeah.
Five more minutes.
Five more, it's only ten more minutes. Can I say really quickly, like, we used to have a lawyer at every policy committee meeting who worked for the city and it wasn't privileged. She knew education law and she was available to answer questions than anyone could be at the public meeting. So I think part of what my frustration is, is that by going down this path of having outside counsel, where by design, setting up a process that is less clear to the rest of the board does not allow for like seamless incorporation of legal advice into the ongoing and ordinary work of the committee and turns it into like a special thing where every time we need a lawyer, we have to figure out how to set up a meeting. So I guess my ask would be, we revisit having somebody from the city. I mean,
So I guess my ask would be, we revisit having somebody from the city. I mean, we have people. Who could be there and involved, and then we wouldn't be in this situation every time we have a legal question about a policy.
I don't think our city legal team is equipped to handle some of the issues we're dealing with.
That's what we've been told, you know.
But you're speaking more generally, right?
And then they're not available also. I mean, that's the. Well, okay, let's try to decide, should we have non-meeting with counsel at our next board meeting at six fifteen?
What's the policy committee gonna be?
Our next board meeting, May. I get, I would this, I would like the policy commit, they, the policy committee just got this feedback. So I think whatever you guys wanna do, right?
I think, I think what, I, it's a, I don't wanna speak freely, Lisa, but I, I, I think that um. What's being sought after is that the policy committee deliberate with board members. In a non-councils, in, in a non-meeting council session, right?
I think my question is, I'd like to be able to hear what the legal advice is that we're getting.
Right.
So I don't need to be like speaking at the meeting, like you're trying to revise the policy and then I'm like over here like, no, write what I say. I just wanna hear what the lawyer says.
But, but I, I think what you're saying is that you wanna be part and parcel to that before a non-meeting with counsel going into a board meeting. Uh, because that's downstream of the policy committee. Is that what like the?
The, I literally don't understand your question, I'm sorry, I may be just tired.
Just ask the policy committee to. Figure it out.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Alright, uh, yes, Carrie. I have just, I, I have someone, I guess there are announcements, but I forgot about them, so now they're coming as minutes, even though I don't have written minutes. But I started on the rec committee, um, and that was really fun and um, two things I wanted to mention. Because we have been getting concerns about feedback for the um, cost of after-school care. That all of the financial assistance through the rec department goes through the Key Collective, which is the RUIN program. Um, and so that's just something, if we're trying to be helpful, community members, we can point people towards so that their rec programs are. Covered through whatever, so, I don't know what they call it. Um, the other thing is that they, they, although many of their programs are very large. Are, are, are over-enrolled with waiting lists, there is a teen camp for six, entering sixth to eighth graders. That does have some spots available and that is a very hard age group to find um, summer enrichment opportunities for. So I'll put that out. And then there are other questions to the board, what, was whether after-school busing to community campus. Is in the plans, and I did not recall talking about that during budgeting, but that would be helpful um, to, I think.
We're, yeah, bus companies working on it. We're, first priority is making sure we take our redistricting, second priority is. Yeah, for school fussing too.
Thank you for that update. Sorry, those are my uh, minute announcements. Okay, and I have been um, substituting for Lee on the sustainability committee in the, I should have written the minutes, I apologize. The, the concern that they would like the school board to examine is electric buses, having us purchase electric buses. So I'm gonna prepare a report with Brian's help um, about, you know, how much it would cost. Um, that, that's basically the issue, because how much it will cost and Brian has expressed an interest in, you know, that with me, is that right?
Six, very good Jedi mind.
Okay, we're, we have to reopen the public comment session. Do we have anybody here present for public comment? I will close the public comment session. Okay, do we have a motion?
Those need adjourn.
Adjourn. What time is it, Byron?
Man, it's four, ten oh five.
Okay.
So, Nancy, done.
I don't know exactly.
And we voted to approve that.